It's nine o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call them. I guess, uh, very being note that Bill is gone today, Lori may be coming yet. I don't really know, haven't heard that she's gonna be gone, and that Deb is representing the county board today. And, um, just, well, if we are short, uh, just, I always kinda like to announce that the, just first item to pass, it has to be by the majority of the planning commission, which, uh, planning commission is seven, so it's four that need to pass. It's not a majority who's present, it's four of the, uh, of the planning, uh, commission. And for the audience, if you haven't seen the agenda, the agendas are in the back bookshelf, so. And with that, I guess, approval of the April twenty-fourth minutes. Everyone get a chance to review? Anyone have any additions, corrections? If not, an entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Uh, approval of the agenda, today's agenda, uh, consent items are three through twelve, and those will be read in a little bit, and then the remaining agenda, um, items through nineteen. Anyone have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I approve, um, entertained motion for approval of the agenda, it's presented. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carried. Today's consent calendar, as I just mentioned, are items three through twelve. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance to the staff's recommendation by single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by the planning commissioner, staff member, audience member, for a separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations that Painton County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision, and I note that unless it's appealed, uh, conditional uses that are approved are final here, unless appealed to the county board. And I'm assuming you all, from, uh, the emails and the audience, I'm assuming you all have some items that would be getting pulled, but Cassie, if you agree for the record, um, three through twelve, and then we'll see what items are to be pulled.
Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item number three is conditional use permit review ninety-six fourteen for Mark Hirsch to review a manufactured home as a caretaker's residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit ninety-six fourteen to the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, Planning Commission meeting. Item number four is conditional use permit review thirteen oh-nine for Beverly Sears to review an accessory structure prior to a principal structure in a suburban residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit thirteen oh-nine with five conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review fifteen thirty-eight for Mark and Ann Habrick to review living in an existing double-wide mobile home while building a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit fifteen thirty-eight at his, as it is no longer needed. Item six is conditional use permit seventeen oh-nine for Wes and Carrie Mintley to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Excuse me. And staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen oh-nine with seventeen conditions. Item seven is conditional use permit seventeen-ten for Maurice and Sonia Crowley, um, Vaco Vacation Rentals LLC as the agent, to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen-ten with fourteen conditions. Item eight is conditional use permit seventeen-eleven for Gerard and Michelle Milner and Vaco Vacation Rentals LLC as the agent, to allow for a vacation rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen-eleven with fourteen conditions. Item nine is conditional use permit seventeen-twelve for Deborah Pimental, Vaco Vacation Rentals LLC as the agent, to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen-twelve with seventeen conditions. Item ten, conditional use permit seventeen-thirteen for Diana Bryant to live in an existing residence, a single-wide mobile home, while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district, and staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen-thirteen with nine conditions. Item eleven is construction permit seventeen-oh-six for the city of Rapid City, Banner Associates as the agent, to install six-inch, eight-inch, and twelve-inch water main to provide Rapid City potable water to the Valley View Estates subdivision, and staff is recommending approval of construction permit seventeen-oh-six with seven conditions. Item twelve is major planned unit development amendment seventeen-oh-three for Chris Hamm, KTM Design Solutions, to amend the existing planned unit development zoning districts to allow for additional storage units, to allow the single-family residents to be used as a caretaker's residence, and to allow future commu- commercial uses, and to allow a car wash facility. And staff is recommending to continue major planned unit development amendment seventeen-oh-three to the May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, Planning Commission meeting.
Is staff wishing to pull any items?
Yes, item number four and item number eight.
Any others? Planning Commission, anyone wishing to pull any other items?
We wanna pull item number seven, please.
I'll get to the public in just a second. Um, Planning Commission, yeah, I wish to pull item eleven, so.
Seven?
Yep. And now, from the public? What, what was?
We wish to pull item number seven, please.
Seven, okay, thank you. Any other items from the public that wish to pull for further consideration? Hearing none, I guess, uh, entertained motion for approval of consent calendar, items three, five, six, nine, ten, and twelve. So moved?
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carried. That'll take us into item seven.
Four.
Oh, four, sorry, sorry.
Item four is a conditional use permit review, um, to review an accessory structure, a wooden playhouse prior to a principal structure. Um, staff pulled this. We received a complaint this morning that this playhouse may be being used for purposes other than just a playhouse. At the time that we wrote the staff report, um, we felt that all conditions had been being met. However, um, we did not go into the structure, we did not have a reason to go into the structure at that point, um, but we did receive the complaint this morning, so, um, staff is requesting that this be continued to the May twenty-second Planning Commission meeting so that we can meet with the applicant, um, and actually see what is inside the playhouse.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to continue conditional use permit CU thirteen dash oh-nine to what meeting?
The May twenty-second.
May twenty-second meeting.
Okay.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
I, I just have a question. On the, in the pictures here in the package, there, it looks like there's two structures side by side. Are they all on the same property, or, I just wanna get clarification on that as well?
Yes, I believe those are on the same property.
And, and there's not a principal structure on the property, just out of curiosity, or is there?
Right.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Is it the, I mean, it's one subject property, but it's two lots, isn't it? Wasn't that the issue when we looked at it before? And they're small lots, I mean, this...
Yeah, they're usually, most of them in Silver City are developmental type lots, yeah.
We have a motion second for continuing to May twenty-second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried. Now, item seven.
All right, item seven is a conditional use permit to allow for a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Um, the applicants here are Maurice and Sonia Crowley, the agent is Vaco Vacation Rentals. Um, I'll just kinda go through this briefly for the public that's here today. As this property exists today, it is Zone Suburban Residential, it's one-point-five acres. Access is off of Silver Fox Spur, and it currently contains a single-family residence and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The applicants applied for this, um, conditional use permit on April fifth. They have complied with all of the application submitted requirements for a vacation home rental. They do meet the minimum one-acre, um, lot size as stated in section three nineteen B of our zoning ordinance. Um, the existing onsite wastewater treatment system was approved by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources on March twenty-eighth of this year for a maximum overnight occupancy of six people. Um, Bailey Goodwin or Carson Goodwin has been designated as the local contact. Um, on March twenty-eighth, the vacation rental was inspected by the State Department of Health and received an overall inspection rating of ninety-one on a hundred-point scale. Um, and comments on the inspection report noted that it was okay to operate and license. Um, and on April twenty-fifth, staff did perform a site visit with the agent, um, and verified that the residence appears to have four bedrooms, there appears to be adequate space on the subject property. Um, Mr. Goodwin, the agent, also indicated that the landowner still resides in the residence and will be, only be using the property as a vacation home rental when they themselves are on vacation. Um, and at the time of this staff report writing, staff had not received any complaints regarding the subject property, and I have not received any complaints since this staff report writing, so staff was recommending approval with fourteen conditions.
Questions for Cassie?
Do we know, um, how often the landowner will be on vacation?
That I don't know, um...
Okay.
Oh, um, the agent is here in the audience today, he might know.
We'll go with questions for Cassie first, any other questions for Cassie? And the applicant here wishing to speak?
The agent is here.
Agent? If you could come to the podium, state your name and...
Carson Goodwin. Um, they plan on probably sixty days out of the year, full calendar year. Is he on his vacation rental?
Okay, um, my next question is in regards to the score that the, um, that gets put on these. What, what does it take to, uh, pass, so to say? Like, this one's ninety-one out of a hundred, others are higher, some are lower. What is it, do you know what that, that scale is?
I do not know right off the top of my head what the state considers passing and not passing. Um, I can certainly check with Charlotte Johnson, she's the one who inspects all of these. I'd be happy to check with her, but I, I've never had one low enough, I guess, to question...
Just a question.
What's passing and what's not.
Other questions for the applicant? Apted agent? Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Please come to a podium and state your name.
My name is Chris Lampert, and I live on, uh, end of Silver Fox Spur. We're, uh, neighbors with Maury and Sonia. I'm looking at Copper Oaks two, we are, I am in Copper Oaks one, Maury and Sonia are in Copper Oaks two. I'm looking at a copy of the Copper Oaks two, uh, covenants, which, uh, specifically says, um, item number nineteen, commercial business, no commercial business or, uh, dwell... No commercial business or business for profit shall be conducted from any dwelling, dwelling constructed on these premises or in the premises itself. So, they're against covenants to begin with. Secondly, they did do this last year, and it was probably all summer long. They didn't, they didn't get the permits, they didn't have anything that they needed like they're doing this year. They did do it last year. We are a community area, rural area. We don't have the emergency support that could be needed in an area where, um, they would come in and possibly have a disturbance. Nobody would be able to get there because we are sheriffs, it takes a little bit longer. It's not like we have, you know, the PD going around and in the area consistently. Uh, fire, we're in the hills. I'm sure that Maury and Sonia will make sure that there's, you know, nothing there, but that is, as somebody who lives in the hills, that's always a concern, is people not paying attention if they're smokers and, and outside. Most of the people in our neighborhood do work all day long, and then you have strangers in your neighborhood every time you come home. And I find that incredibly uncomfortable. I also don't think it's very good for our, um, property values to have a rental right there. I mean, we've all spent a lot of money to live in the area that we live in and to have our property values devalued because Maury and Sonia wanna rent out their house, which again is against the covenants is, is, just, I'm in disagreement with it.
Questions for Chris? Okay, I would comment that, um, many of the points you made were brought up during this, the discussion of redoing the vacation home rental. It's a common concern on a lot of them that you have expressed. And, uh, the other thing is that the county does not enforce covenants. It's, uh, up to the homeowners association, and I believe with the rewrite, the... Cassie, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it may be considered, but it's, the covenants are not enforceable by the county under the, the ordinance.
Or city.
It has to be enforced by the homeowners association.
Okay. What else?
Hi, I'm Jeff Hoffman, uh, we live in, uh, one-three-six-five-five Silver Fox Spur, uh, next door to Sonia and, and Maury. I have nothing personally against Sonia and Maury, they're good neighbors, but I prefer not to have, a vacation home rental, 'cause, kinda like, uh, uh, what Ms. Lam, Ms. Lampert said. We'd come home last year, uh, we never knew who was, was going to be there. Little bit concerned about property values, concerned about liability. One time we came home and there were kids playing on a trampoline. One point that I think is pertinent, on the specifications, I looked up this morning before coming, and on the specifications for issuance of a permit, it said, if I understood correctly, that one of the requirements is that they would be in compliance with, uh, the covenants for that, or, for that development.
I don't believe that's the current version of the ordinance.
Cassie, do you know? I just looked it up. The way the ordinance currently reads is, "In granting or denying the conditional use permit for a vacation home rental, the planning commission and/or board of commissioners may consider the provision of a restrictive covenant which expressly and specifically excludes the use of a residence as a vacation home rental."
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Questions for Jeff?
The, the house in question, is it in Copper Oaks two or Copper Oaks three?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess for the audience too, again, that's, it's been brought up several times during the, uh, hearing process for vacation home rentals and, and quite honestly, the vaca, in a suburban residential, that was probably the most controversial part of, uh, allowing vacation home rentals, but it, uh, did pass to, uh, have, uh, vacation home rentals in suburban residential if large in one acre, uh, which one, this does meet. But I guess the other concern is too, that's, again, there's a lot of discussion, is, uh, several courts, uh, in other jurisdictions have ruled that, uh, vacation home rentals are not a commercial use. It's still a residential use, now that's, hasn't been tested in Painton County, so, uh, it's somewhat unanswered, but there are, there is precedent in other courts that, uh, vacation home rentals are not commercial. Whether you agree or not, that's, um, some information that we've been presented over the years, so. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Robert Yelick, I live across the road from this property. A couple of points. Number one, trespassing. This home was rented in April, and a group of at least six people occupied the residence for several days. Our, my lot sits higher topographically than the road and stuff, so it's, uh, higher. And the occupants went on a walk one morning, which they were doing, they were walking up and down. It's a good place to walk, it's a nice quiet neighborhood. My neighbor had cut down several trees in the front of his lot. I looked out and they were all up on his lot, playing on the fallen logs. And everything was going along pretty good, and then they started playing on the cut rounds and walking on them. And after a couple of slips, then things went on down the road. But, we're, by our covenants, disallowed fencing, so everything's open. And it's not overtly, you know, where all the property lines are. And there's just a lot of potential here for trespass. And, uh, you don't know who it is, it concerns, I think, all of us. We don't know who's gonna rent the property, and that's certainly lower my sense of security, living in the place. The other thing I would say to you is, the Silver Fox Spur is an eighteen-foot roadway. And all of us as neighbors are very conscious about parking in that roadway, because two of the owners that live at the cul-de-sac, if they have a fire, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be fun getting in and out of there if much is parked on the roadway. Occasionally, this house and several others live, stay below the roadway, and they'll pull up in the wintertime and park on the roadway, and it's a little bit of concern. So, fire access would be another item. Thank you. Questions?
Questions for Robert? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jury Shukru, um, if this was known to be operating illegal, like if it was already rented in April before the permit was issued, uh, did they pay a penalty when they applied, uh, for their permit?
Yeah, I see, can you enter, answer that?
That is the first I've heard of it being operated before the application of this conditional use permit, so, we were not aware that it was operating illegally. So, no, they did not pay a penalty fee.
Is there one?
Pardon me?
Is there a penalty?
Well...
There is, yes.
What's the penalty?
It's double the application fee, plus a five-hundred-dollar penalty fee, so it would've cost them an extra eight-hundred dollars to apply.
Is the applicant here?
Uh, Aza. Aza, I forget your name, sorry.
Carson.
If you could come up to the podium, please?
If we could, Sig. Have you been operating this as a vacation home rental without a permit, sir?
Well, we've had one, uh, one reservation. Other than that, nothing. We've had the, the signed posted conditional use permit, and we're, uh, conforming to every regulation in, in the process.
Were, were you involved with the pro, property last summer, then?
Uh, just this year.
And this year...
So it may have been operating last year as a vacation home rental, just now that you're...
I'm not familiar, uh, my first year.
Okay.
This is your first year, and in April you did operate it without a permit?
Pending, yes.
Okay, pending is, is the same as, you can't operate it until it is legally a vacation home rental.
Okay.
Okay, so there might, I don't know if this board wants to find you or not, but, um, it wouldn't be inappropriate to do that when it shouldn't have been operating until it had a conditional use permit, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? When, when you have an agreement with the vacation home enter, um, renters, uh, vacation homeowners, um, is it, can you tell us about the term of that agreement?
With the homeowner or the...
With the homeowner, yeah, with this property. So you're saying that you weren't involved in this until starting in April of this year, or this calendar year?
Calendar year.
Okay, so you have a cal, okay, so you have a calendar year agreement, or your company has a calendar year agreement with this homeowner?
Uh, on restricting the number of days, or what's your question?
No, I mean, um, do, do you have to sign an annual contract with your, the people that rent vacation homes through you?
Yes, every single one.
Excuse me?
Every single one.
Okay, and so, just so I understand, for this particular property, their agreement with you started January first of seventeen?
Um, yes, sure.
And since January first of seventeen, you have only rented this without a county permit?
One time, correct.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I had a question, a, a concern I heard. Uh, if the covenants don't allow fencing, and then how is, uh, the rental company or the owner controlling some of the concerns addressed where people are wandering onto their, other properties outside this? If there's no fencing allowed in the neighborhood? Uh, is there, is there disclosure that's being, uh, maps being provided? Or clearly identifying to the renters that where the property lines are?
Yes, and we will disclose to each guest, uh, to, uh, respect other people's property and, um, not bound out, outside of that. Uh, we'll take better consideration, so.
Is that monitored at all, once you have a renter on board?
Um, yeah, it is, definitely.
Is there a daily drive-by, or how is that confirmed?
Um, well, not, not, not in place. No. We just disclose to each, each guest before.
Mr. Chair, what recourse does the, uh, property owners have if someone comes onto their property, falls, and gets injured?
Oh, we have contracts, um...
You have a contract with the local property owners, or who?
The guests.
Just with a guest. I'm talking about if a guest leaves the rented property, goes to the neighbor, plays on the trees like he was talking about, falls and gets injured, who's now responsible, who's liable for that?
Yes. Sorry. Guest.
Other questions?
All right, what was the answer?
Guest.
No. If you're, if you're gonna speak, you need to come up to the podium and, wait your turn. You don't, we don't debate up front. Please sit down until we, I'll call you back up again.
Mr. Chair, I just have one other question. And this is concerning the profit. Is this business being operated as a, as a profit, for-profit business, or is it a, you know, nonprofit organization that's doing this?
For profit.
Okay.
But your answer, the guest is not responsible, any, a person injured on your property, the property owner is responsible, and their insurance would have to cover it.
Yeah.
Unless you have an agreement that covers, uh, the other properties.
I'll have to refer back to my contract.
Well, I, like I said, I brought that up, 'cause to me that sounds like a concern of it's been an issue of wandering, and, and with the covenant of no fences, it's, it's hard to, in a forested area, to tell where boundaries are.
Of course.
So, that's, anyway, a concern I would have, so. Thank you.
That's a good question. Actually, I believe, sir, s- sorry, Sig, I mean...
No, go ahead.
Sorry, sir. If you own a business and somebody signed a contract with your business, it would think that, um, they're doing business with you. Seems like you are the liability if someone, if they get hurt on your property or somebody else's, because they're taking responsibility, they signed a contract with you. And maybe Michelle...
Michelle, yeah, I was gonna say, that's exactly where I was gonna go.
Thank you, Sig.
I don't think you're going to reach a definitive answer to that question, first of all. In terms of legal liability outside of contractual agreements, it can oft, often depend on whether you're an invitee, such as a guest I've invited to my home, into my home, where I bear a lot, a greater responsibility versus someone who trespasses onto that property. So, um, uh, where arguably, and without, you know, researching the codebooks, you're, you, the homeowner may not bear any liability if someone trespasses on your property.
This question, Sig. So, I think it'd be different if it was a homeowner or if it was a person, vacation home rental person versus homeowner, does that make sense? If I was a homeowner, I would think, you know, if I went on somebody's property, it'd be different than if it actually was... Okay, people don't wanna call it a business, it is a rental business, um, and they signed a contract to be in that house in that area, and then go trespass. And to somebody else's, wouldn't that make the company liable for not, you know, taking care of their business like they're supposed to? And people know common sense, well, maybe not, but to go on people's land, I would think that it would be the vacation home rental people's responsibility if anything happened to somebody's property around there. And if, if legally it wasn't, I would still, as a vacation home rental person, take that responsibl- ability anyway, because I'm renting it out and these people are my responsibility.
Well, first of all, as we all know, as... Well, first of all, as we all know, as, uh, government employees and representatives, if someone's injured, whether you are or not at fault will not preclude you being named in a lawsuit in many cases. And then ultimately, the liability gets fleshed out throughout the court proceedings. But in response to your specific question, I think, you know, there's the liability of perhaps the owner of the property, or the logs, the trees have been cut down. If someone trespasses on their land, I believe that they would have little to no liability. Again, I'm not a court of law, I'm not a jury, versus the, the operator of the vacation home rental, they do certainly have a certain responsibility to their tenants, their guests, as well as the individual they maintain a contract with. So, that would be separate from perhaps the, yeah, the neighbor next door who, whose property was invaded. Does that answer your question?
No, I thought once you trespass, that, um, you're in violation the minute you trespass. And then you're going onto somebody else's property as trespassing, so you're illegal already. And then you do something and get hurt on someone's property while you're doing something illegal, and then you're telling me it's
Well, let's take...
homeowners that they're on their property.
Okay, let's take the situation where this situation is presented to us. These tenants, the vaca- the individuals who rented the vacation home, um, they go into that lot, they slip and fall, and the logs are injured. Now, the liability of the homeowner, the person who owned that land, is likely completely different from, say, the business that rented this, because perhaps they didn't adequately inform that tenant that this wasn't public property. Perhaps they didn't give certain advisements, um. So, the, the, the owner of the home who's rented, we got two different pieces of property, we got the home that's rented, but the one that was trespassed.
I, I'm not measuring everybody's property in my neighborhood to make sure if I'm on or off somebody's property. I should know if I'm vacation home rental, I mean, common sense is, I keep saying that word, don't I? Um, but you're gonna tell me he needs a map out everybody's lots?
No, I'm not, I'm not telling you that. I'm saying that each individual's potential liability is gonna be different depending on the role, or they, they, the contracts, the roles they play.
Right.
The concern is the, the liability of the innocent homeowner whose logs are on their property. Their property has been trespassed, their liability. Again, I, you know, I can't make an absolute representation, I'm not a court of law, I'm not a jury. I'm just saying that the liability will depend on your status, whether you're an invitee, a guest, et cetera.
Isn't a classic example those swimming pools? If you have a pool and somebody trespasses and drowns, you're likely gonna get sued. People put up fences to prevent that. Here you have a trampoline on a neighboring property, you, you can't put up fences, so couldn't you, you know, that be argued in court that you have a, attractive nuisance? And now that homeowner has to change their way of living and take the tramp down on their property, 'cause they can't fence it?
Again, that's what I'm saying. I said, there, there's so many different legal principles at work. There is the theory of attractive nuisance, and, and where perhaps you bear a duty to protect young children who per- perhaps don't know better and wander onto your property. There's also the, the legal tenants that involve, whether you're an invitee or a guest, which impact, um, liability. We're, as I said, we're not gonna reach a deter- a definitive answer. And the bottom line is, the homeowner, whether they're at fault or not, may be sued.
They can be sued no matter what on anything, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Uh, and I apologize if we've already covered this, 'cause I was late. Um, did we talk about your, your particular company? Can you tell us a little bit about, um, how many homes you manage in the hills, or just some basic stuff?
Okay, sure.
How long you been in business? 'Cause I've just recently noticed your, your sign, so.
Sure. Um, so, I'm new this year. Been in business for about three years, roughly. Um, man- managing thirty, thirty hills, or thirty properties in the hills. As far as Keystone, Hill City, up, up to Nemo.
But this, this company has been doing this, you've been doing this with this company, or this is a new company?
It's new, well, it's a new company.
Okay. And so, right now, you said you have about how many homes? You have thirty homes you're managing in this company?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Robert, did you wish to come to the podium yet? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Staff recommendation is for approval with fourteen conditions, and I guess Cassie, uh, given the knowledge that it was operating before at this point, uh, I guess, are you looking, do you feel confident enough that you wanna change any conditions? Or is that something you feel needs research before?
Yeah, I guess I would need to know how, how long it was operated for last year. Um, we try to be as consistent as possible. One of the other vacation home rentals that was approved on the consent calendar did pay a penalty fee because he was operating without, um, without the proper permits from the county. So, for the sake of consistency, if they were in fact in violation of our ordinance, um, that could potentially invoke some sort of penalty fees. Um, but I would have to know how long, 'cause of course, if they operate for fourteen days or less, then they're under that rally rule, as they call it, um, where they wouldn't necessarily need a permit from the county. So, I guess I would need to know more information about how often they did it last summer. I know they had mentioned that it was all summer, um, but I would need to know if it was more than those fourteen days to kind of establish what we would need to do.
But, but Cass, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, um, but Cassie, you wouldn't penalize this company for last year? You can't.
Right, it would be the, it would be the property.
You would have to penalize the home, property owner.
The property owner, yes, yes.
And the penalty doesn't, um, so in this particular case, both the property owner and the agent would be penalized, correct?
Uh, there would just be one penalty, and it's usually the property owner.
And the, and the penalty doesn't, um, doesn't change based on the duration, does it?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just once you're in violation...
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sig, just one more thing.
Sure.
So, Cassie, they didn't take this, Vaco didn't take this company, or this vacation home rental till January? First of the year, yeah.
So, we said calendar year.
Yep. And then there's a rule that you get so many per, I, I just heard him say that, forgot.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
Yeah, so if it was under fourteen days, if it was fourteen days, then he ca- he won't be penalized.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, if it was less than fourteen days last year, um, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to be penalized, because that's allowed to rent your house for no more than fourteen days in a calendar year.
So, can we have the Vaco, can I come up again and tell us how long he rented it?
He might not know, since he wasn't involved with them last year.
This year, April.
Yeah, they rented it in April.
So, in April, did you, do you remember how many days you rented your vacation home rental?
Um, not specific, um, less than three or four days.
Less than what?
Four, four days, probably. I'm, I, I had to refer back, I'm not familiar.
It'd be nice to know that, too, to see if, if that's over that, sir. Thank you.
Definitely not over fourteen.
Not over fourteen, okay.
Well, maybe I, Laurie, I wasn't maybe understanding your question, but I mean, the conditional use permit goes to the...
To the homeowner, yeah, that's what I was, yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah.
A- and I guess, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if we're, we, we shouldn't ask about future rentals, because nothing else has happened, yeah.
Right.
Right.
The only one we know about is the past.
I guess, Cassie, I would say, on, on that matter, two options is continue, or we, we add a condition. If it was discovered it is more fourteen days before the permit is op- can go into operation, it would have to be subject to penalties.
Mm-hmm. Um, I would be fine with either one. It's kind of up to what you guys want to do. Um, we can continue it, and I can make contact with the landowner, or we could just put a condition in there, and I'll still make contact with the landowner. Um, kind of up to you guys what you would like to do.
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that we do put a condition in there that, uh, i- if, if it's approved, and, you know, it's that, uh, the permit would not be operational until the fine is paid, if the fine is applicable.
Right.
Sig, I'd make a motion to, to continue this. I don't know what's the next available meeting, or if it's a, um, dealing with the contractor, or the, or the property owner's, um, availability, but, or do we just continue it to the next meeting and find out?
Deb, I think that condition would cover why you would con- continue it, though. And they could, does that make sense? That condition that Sig's talking about would, would take care of what you're thinking on the continuance, instead of continuing it. Meaning, they're gonna pay the fine if it's under or over fourteen days. And if it's not, then it's, it's approved.
Was that actually a motion?
Yes.
I was working to find out exactly what day to continue it to in the motion, but, um, if the next meeting is the most appropriate, that's what I would continue it to. I think there's more discussion on this.
I'll second it, then, if it was a motion, yeah.
We have a motion second. Further discussion, go ahead and tell us.
Um, because I'm, I'm, I'm leaning against this if it was, if it was to go full-on as any of the other recommendations, or with that one recommendation, because of some of the wording in the particular, um, aspect here, the copper oaks, um, restricted covenants. Uh, I would vote against it, just because it outlines that no commercial business or business for profit shall be conducted. So, I think we should go forward with at least getting the, um, find out if the property owners were operating, um, outside of our ordinances, and then they pay the penalty for that, and then we move forward with any further information. That's the reason why I did it that way.
Further discussion? Debs, it looked like you were ready to say something. No?
I'll make a substitute, that we add the condition in there and approve this with that, if that condition is met. Based that it meets all the conditions. Um, and we have many vacation home rentals that have areas with covenants, and unfortunately, um, it hasn't, unfortunately, withheld because of legalities.
I'll second.
We have a motion second for a substitute motion, further discussion.
And again, J- oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, Deb, I get your point. Those that we've looked at, those do say specifically no commercial business, this actually, unless I've missed it before, this one specifically said no commercial business or business for profit. I haven't seen that in any other ones. And you know, I'm pretty much a, I do want people to have their, I was, I was one of the ones who supported the VHR rewrite and, and the aspects of it. That's why whenever I saw that very specific language in the covenants, I felt that that right there, no commercial businesses has been in all the other ones, but it didn't have or business for profit, which I think this is slightly different. That's why I think it's very specific to say no business for profit.
So, nobody could rent their houses out in that area ever?
Well, according to the covenants, I'm just saying, if we follow covenants...
Those houses have to be sold, then, because residents, if they're sold, if they're used for rentals, not just vacation home rentals, that'd be for profit. So, you cannot have a rental residence out there either.
I'm not the one who established the covenant, so I guess we'd have to talk to the covenant committee.
I would say the difference is, in this ordinance, is we did change it from requiring us to look at the covenants to consider the covenants. And I don't believe any other ordinance for rental property or that ever has a statement of considering covenants. So, that's where I would say the difference.
Uh, you know, at the cost of revisiting the vacation home rental ordinance, you know, the issue with suburban residential was, is it or is it not commercial? Well, I noted that Vaco is representing several, um, of the applications today, and so I looked up your business. And I have nothing against your business, you're wonderful entrepreneurs, and you've found a niche, and you're, you seem to be serving it well. However, you consider it a commercial business, even though some of the courts do not, and Pennington County Commissioners didn't seem to consider it a business. But here are the services that you do offer, it's on your website. Marketing, professional property pricing, eye-catching advertisements, social media integration, guest services, welcoming guide, uh, local area information, concier- concierge services, excursions and services, check-in, checkout procedures. Three, leasing, guest screening, structural agreements, VR rules and regulations, regulatory, uh, compliance, fair housing law. Number four, maintenance, preventive maintenance, fire safety, health regulation, local, state, and federal compliance, emergency response. Number five, accounting, credit card processing, security collection, damage protection, insurance sales, tourism, and municipal taxes. And number six, cleaning, pre and post guest inspections, damage reporting, and the Ten Commandments of VHR, cleaning, mid-stay cleanings. This is a business, and the covenant said no businesses.
Can I answer that? Um, it wasn't Pennington County Commissioners that decided it wasn't commercial. It was Vacation Home Rental Committee, it was this planning commission, and then we moved it to, um, County Commission. And also, um, I do think there is a court case on it that said it wasn't commercial and wasn't called commercial. I never said I didn't think it was, but, um, it's not, I, I only follow the law, Ms. Barb.
Yeah. Well, the buck stops at the commissioners.
Michelle, I'll recommend it, Michelle.
Michelle Hoffman, on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office, just for sake of clarification for the commission, as well as the public. There are myriad of court cases on this issue, um, with, as you would expect, different, uh, decisions, not only based upon the jurisdiction, but also based upon the language of the specific covenant, um, which Commissioner Lassiter has pointed out. Uh, in this case, it says not for profit, but this is why, uh, in our office's opinion, it says may consider the covenant, is that it, you may consider the covenant if you so wish. Generally, the commission does not enforce private covenants. With VHR, and given the circumstances, the language is you may consider it. But if you are to consider it, it puts you in a position of essentially a trier effect. Quasi-judicial board, where you're gonna go back and interpret that contract, determine, to determine what was actually meant at the time that contract was drafted between the parties. Thus, the current ordinance says may consider a covenant that specifically, specifically excludes the HRs, um, to get away from that gray area, and you putting yourselves in a position of trying to interpret what the parties meant. And as far as the commercial versus residential aspect, um, the courts that have come down and decided that it is not a commercial business is viewing the use of the property from the tenants. Meaning, the tenants who are occupying the VHR are not using that structure any differently than the next-door neighbor who actually owns their home. So, again, South Dakota's not addressed this issue. Uh, the majority cases arguing it from the actual use, day-to-day use of the property, versus what would be the use of the landlord. The landlord is certainly using the property for commercial uses, but the tenants are using the property for residential uses. And, and those are kind of the issues, um, around which you get the varying decisions. And also, the decisions are very fa- fact-specific, dependent upon the covenants at issue. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Barb.
I think that the larger issue here is one that I've brought up before and has never been addressed. What is the purpose of zoning law? And in particular, what is the purpose of the zoning law in suburban residential and other residential districts? And it is my feeling, my assessment, that it should be to protect the property owners. And, uh, this does not do that.
I, I would know, when we went through all the vacation home rewrite and discussions, and, uh, a lot of the, the discussion was that maybe we need to scrutinize things more, too. So, and look at this particular situation, that was part of the discussion, so.
Just a question, property owners goes both ways, so remember that. And number two, um, is there any, does one of, any of the neighbors, can they answer my question? Is there any rental houses in this covenant? Are they all property owners that have signed the covenants? There isn't any, um, houses that are being rented out there? Everybody that has their houses out there own them on this covenant?
Mr. Chair, but I think from what Michelle was saying, though, if you wanted to try to enforce something like that, a covenant has to specifically say there will be no rental properties, there will be no vacation homes. If that's, that's what, that's what I heard, Michelle. If that's, that's what, that's what I heard Michelle say. The covenant would have to say you may not rent your home as a homeowner, you may not have a vacation home.
The ordinance specifically says, I'm referring to the ordinance. I'm not discussing the specifics of the covenants. And if any of these homeowners sought to enforce those covenants in a private suit, the, the ordinance itself says that the commission may consider a covenant where it specifically excludes vacation home rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a, someone else wishing to speak?
No, I think I understood what she said. I was gonna get clarification, but as it processed through, I think I understood what she was saying.
We have a substitute motion and a second, further discussion.
Could the substitute motion be repeated, please?
Jerry?
Moved by Hancock and seconded by Litsen. This is what I prepared for the condition that if the single-family residence was previously operated as a vacation home rental without approval of a conditional use permit, the applicant slash property owner shall pay the double application fee and penalty fee prior to use of the single-family residence as a vacation home rental.
So pay the fine before, if, if it gets approved, the fine must be paid before the permit's issued?
Yes.
Is that, was that the intent of your?
Yes. Before they can operate.
Other discussion. Hearing none, I guess a vote on the substitute motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Nope. Aye.
Three, three, so substitute motion fails.
Can I get a roll call on that?
Okay, roll call.
This three and that three.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Sig?
No.
Travis?
No.
And Barbara?
No.
So we're back to original. Back to the original motion of continuing to confirm other issues. And I guess unless you kind of give them some of the discussion, you wish to amend your motion?
Nope, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to continue it so we can get some more information on the property.
Can I get a date in there though?
Uh, what's the next?
The twenty-second.
May twenty-second or June? Can you tell me Travis? If that's okay Sig, what's the more information again?
Finding out if it has been operated as, as, has been claimed has been operated in violation and how many days so they can pay a fine. But that would weigh heavily in my thought process too for any future vote if they are willing to do that and go forward.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Lori?
Can the agent sit down? Okay, I just thought, I thought you might just wanna sit down, yes.
Pardon me?
Under fourteen, Dix?
Well, since you've been operating it.
Yeah, we're talking about the.
It goes back to the owner.
Yeah.
Anyway, motion and second that we're having now is to continue, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
Roll call, Debbie?
Just us two. No.
But then the motion fails. That's why I want to confirm that there's no, you need four.
Yep, Rich?
Rich is.
I'm okay extending it to May twenty-second, I was an aye.
Let's confirm by roll call.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
No.
Lori?
No.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
And Barbara?
Aye.
Item seven is continued to May twenty-second. That takes us to, all right, item eight.
Okay. Item eight is a conditional use permit to allow another vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. The applicants here are Gerard and Michelle Milnor. Again, the agent is VACO Vacation Rentals. So again, I'll just go through this quickly for the audience. As it exists today, it's three point zero two acres. Access to this property is off of Highway forty. Currently contains a single-family residence and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The applicants applied for this conditional use permit on April fifth. They have also complied with all of the application submitted requirements for the vacation home rental. Their onsite wastewater treatment system has been approved by D E N R for a maximum overnight occupancy of eight people. Bailey or Carson Goodman has been designated as the local contact for the vacation home rental. They were inspected by the Department of Health on May twenty-eighth of two thousand seventeen and received an overall inspection rating of ninety-eight out of a hundred. And the comments on the inspection report noted that it was okay to operate and license. On April twenty-fifth, staff did perform a site visit and the residence appears to have three bedrooms and more than adequate parking space on the subject property. The staff report says that at the time of the staff report writing, we had not received any complaints regarding the subject property or the proposed use. Since the staff report went out, I have had one phone conversation with a neighbor and I have received three letters of objection, which I believe you guys should all have in your possession now. And I believe there are neighbors who are wishing to speak on this. Staff had been recommending approval with fourteen conditions.
Questions for Kathy?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, the same question as before. You were not aware if this, I noticed in the comments that some of the people objected, said that this is listed on the website. You were not aware of that when you made this recommendation?
Correct.
Okay.
No questions for Kathy, anyone from the audience wishing to speak?
I'm Steve Struble and I live across the road from this property. And I just have a couple of questions. I kept hearing you could have eight residents over stay night? That's correct.
Yes, maximum occupancy of eight people overnight.
Okay, if you look at their ad on, I'm not gonna call it bargain, but they go, they say twelve. So I'm just curious where our advertising is so much different than what you're saying?
Their advertisements would have to be changed because based on their septic system, they are not approved to have more than eight people.
That's a question I have. I'm not sitting here to disagree with what the vacation rental, but I just want to make sure that it is proper. So that was one question I had. The other question, when I was reading their ads, is telling us that they are right next to Black Hills National Forest property. Just go across the fence and you're there. When I reread it, it doesn't quite say it that way. So I'm, I'm just, I know they have to go past at least two to three different property owners to get to National Forest Service. But it's just the number of residents on the ad versus what your application says is my question. Thank you.
Questions for Steve? Is? Apparently not, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or VACO? I guess the question is, is this your ad that is incorrectly stating it?
I'm not sure which, which one he's referring to. The home has five queen beds and it's able to fit ten people comfortably.
But it's only been approved by D E N R for eight?
Okay.
And I guess is that as far as you're aware, accurate as far as having to cross other people's property to get to Forest Service?
I'm unfamiliar, I'll have to look at it.
You know, if that's your website?
I'm, I don't, I don't think any of our ads have said that. I may be mistaken, I'm not sure, I'll have to look.
Can't you pull up the ad?
Mr. Chair, while he's doing that, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Again, for this particular property, how long have you been the agent for the property? This calendar year? When you have clients that want to rent with you, do you look at their South Dakota license there for vacation rental and make sure, you know, like, that's the question here is that it says, you know, that they can have eight guests? Do you, do you require the homeowners to be in compliance with their license in your advertising?
As far as maximum occupancy?
Yes.
Of course.
Okay, so if, if ten got on your website, you've looked at this and seen it's eight, it must be a mistake, is that what you're saying?
I'll have to look.
If that's what's on the ad, okay. So you do review the license to make sure you're there, they have the license and all that kind of stuff, okay? So they understand the limits, okay?
Sig?
Yep.
What's your name, sir? What's your name?
Carson Goodwin.
Carson?
Right.
Mr. Carson, you sure have a lot of discrepancies on your vacation home rentals already. Just, you've had two with issues and septic is a huge issue. I'm just gonna, and now it's hard for me to approve these thinking that you're just gonna be compliant with what you're doing on vacation home rentals and you just started in January. You have septics that you just talked about. You had people saying about liabilities wandering around on their properties. That doesn't make your company look very sufficient at this point and you're two for two. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I have a business and if I'm running a business, I'm looking on site and I'm gonna look at my vacation home rentals and what I can put on there and make sure I am legal before I start. And I'm gonna know when I come up here and gonna answer questions. I'm not gonna say ten when it only says eight from D E N R. That, that's a great answer, but we're needing to approve this today and you need to look. So do we need to continue this again so we make sure that your vacation home rentals are gonna be up to par for the future? And make sure you know all the information to answer up here, sir?
They.
Correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe we need to continue it. I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Motion and second to continue, further discussion. Joyce will wait till.
Yeah, she brings up the ad.
Twelve. Can't read this one.
Just outside the doors of the Black Hills National Forest.
Yeah, it doesn't say it's right across.
Yeah, that's.
I can say, I can say I'm just outside the door of the Black Hills National Forest downtown.
That's vague enough, I'm good with that, but.
Sleeps twelve.
Yep, sleeps twelve.
Okay. Been a motion.
We have a motion and second, Joyce. Thank you, Carson.
Doris Schugrue, I didn't know if it was appropriate to comment on a continued motion. I agree with Deb and what she's observed here. I do appreciate that this gentleman is bringing forth these if they have been operating illegally, is trying to get them within the ordinance now. And some of us anticipated we were going to go through this process as these surfaced. Again, please verify whether it was operated illegally and be consistent. I appreciate the comment on consistency on applying the penalties and maybe a suggestion for.
The motion is for continue, it should be whether.
Okay.
The discussion.
Okay, so how can I get that, my thought in? When, when, when's it appropriate to get that thought in? I've got another thought on it, which now you're saying is not appropriate.
If we're continuing, it'll be coming up again, then it'd be, if, if this fails and we go to further discussion, then it'd be appropriate or when it's continued and brought up again.
Okay, or I may do it under public comment because it's more general, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. We do have a motion and second for continuing.
Can I get a date in that motion?
When's the next meeting?
May twenty-second.
Thank you, Ms. Jerry, for asking.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of continuing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
This Lori, correct?
One, no.
Motion continue, carry on. Item eleven, and I request that to be pulled down. As Banner is listed as the agent, I will be abstaining.
A move to approve CU seventeen dash zero six.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. And Jerry, please note I'm abstaining.
That's why it's pulled.
Item thirteen.
All right, item thirteen is a conditional use permit seventeen oh eight. This is a request to operate a part-time sawmilling business on the subject property in a low-density residential district. The applicants are Jeremiah and Angela Thomas. They are in the audience today. As this property exists today, it is zoned low-density residential district. It's three point five four acres. Access to this property is off of East Paradise Drive and located within the Leisure Hills Road District. It currently contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, a woodshed, a greenhouse and several small other outbuildings and sheds and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The way that this one came about is we actually did receive a complaint of this sawmilling business being operated from the subject property. Upon verification of that complaint, our ordinance enforcement officer did open an ordinance violation case on this as they needed a conditional use permit to operate their business. Per Pennington County zoning ordinance, they did, or they were required to pay a penalty fee for operating without a conditional use permit. However, on March twenty-first, the Board of Commissioners approved the applicant's request to waive the penalty fees. And then on March twenty-first, excuse me, the applicants then applied for the conditional use permit. They did also submit a description of their business, which should be included in your guys' packet. Gives a little bit more information about what they're doing. This conditional use permit was actually continued from the May, or from the April twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting because it was originally advertised as a home occupation. Upon consultation with the State's Attorney's Office, it was determined that it did not meet our definition of a home occupation. So we had it re-advertised and new notice of hearing letters were sent to all property owners within five hundred feet of the property. Staff did perform a site visit to this property on April thirteenth and spoke with the applicant Jeremiah Thomas. The sawmill that is utilized is this sawmill right here. It is stored in the shed on the east side of the property along with the boards that are milled. Here's the boards. There's the shed that everything is stored in. Mr. Thomas stated that he does not have a drying kiln currently. That was a concern of the fire administrator during his comments. But Mr. Thomas stated that he does not have a drying kiln at this time. He also stated that the sawmill has the same motor as his personal lawn mower. That he has owned the sawmill for two years and based on the total hours that are registered on the machine, it averages two point eight hours per week. He also stated that he has a full-time job off-site and does the sawmilling for extra income. He stated that he saws bug trees and with the dwindling amount of bug trees, the sawmill may be seeing less operation going forward. During review of this property, staff did find that there was two existing structures that were on the property that were constructed without approved building permits. The applicant actually did come in and take care of those building permits last week with all the penalty fees paid. So those have been taken care of. Section two oh four F of the Pennington County zoning ordinance does state that within each district, there are certain uses which are permitted as a conditional use in accordance with the provisions contained in section five ten conditional use permits. The listed conditional uses under each district are illustrative of those which the commission and the board may approve temporarily, permanently, or for a specific time interval. Other uses may be allowed which are not listed, provided they are not contrary to the intent of the district in which they are to be located. In your packets, I did list the conditional uses in a low-density residential district. There are fifteen of, or eighteen of them, excuse me. But upon inspection of that list, it does not appear that businesses outside of the home, so outside of home occupations like the proposed sawmilling business, follow the intent of that zoning district based on the conditional uses that are listed in there. Sawmills are specifically listed as an allowed use in a general agriculture district and as a. and as a conditional use in a limited agriculture district. And at the time of this staff report writing, I had spoken with two neighbors expressing their concern with the conditional use permit and I had received one letter of opposition. Since this staff report writing, I have received two additional letters of opposition and two letters of support, which I believe you guys should have as well. So ultimately, staff's recommendation is for denial of conditional use permit seventeen oh eight as the request appears to fall outside of the intended uses of a low-density residential district. Excuse me. However, if the planning commission chooses to approve this conditional use permit, staff recommends twelve conditions be included.
Well, Kathy, I guess the question I had is, i- is main item that the, the sawmill is operated not in a building? So if it's in a, a large building and it contained that it would be considered from staff's standpoint?
Um, it still wouldn't be considered a home occupation. And that's something that we had talked with the, the state's attorney's office at length about the definition of a home occupation. And in-home businesses are more the intent of, of a zoning district like this, not something that's done from an accessory structure or something along those lines.
Are there questions for Kathy?
I, Mr. Chair, what was this specific complaint originally?
That the business was operating from the property.
That it was just an operating business?
Yes.
Not for noise, not for anything outside of that, just there was a business operating?
Yep, it's my understanding that it was just that the business was being operated.
Okay.
Or?
It's, it seems to me that we've had businesses on even regular residential property with accessory buildings that we've approved. And I'm thinking of Rapid Valley.
Oh.
Um, auto repair and that kind of thing. So there is a precedent to approve.
You are correct. There have been ones that have been in accessory structures. We've defined them as home occupations, but recent determination is that it does not meet the definition of what a home occupation is. A home occupation from our talks with the state's attorney should be from the home, if I'm correct. Michelle helped with that determination.
Another one that we've approved that's probably similar is roofing business.
Yeah?
Yes.
There's another one, that was recently.
Okay.
That roofing business. Just a question too, guys. Okay, I don't really know. It's three point something acres now. Can, how big can the sawmill? Three point five four acres now. How much can this entail? The sawmill on this, I mean, can the whole property turn into three point five four acres of sawmill? You see what I'm saying?
Question for the office, yeah. Well, operation.
Yeah, turning into is my house and now I can expand it up to two point five acres and my house can be on an acre. Do you see what I'm saying? That's the only thing with not being home occupation and you're gonna turn it into a business. It's, it is on a.
Maybe I missed.
Not on a conditional use permit?
Well, Michelle, I guess you, it looks like you could offer some guidance here too, so.
Michelle Hoffman, on behalf of the state's attorney's office, I want to address the issue of home occupation. Recently, there've been a few applications which have created questions within the planning and zoning department with regard to home occupations, which prompted our office to look at these issues and specifically the definition of home occupation. And that is that, not only that it's an enclosed structure, but it is being used incidentally and secondarily to the residential occup- occupancy of that structure. So use of an accessory structure would not fall within the definition of an occupa- home occupation. And one of the issues we looked at ultimately, I believe the requested use was approved, but under a different set of criteria. So, so I understand and our office did understand that perhaps there've been previous decisions made by this commission allowing businesses out, outside of, or being operated within accessory structure. But when we looked at the issue recently, we don't feel it falls within the definition of a home occupation. Thus, the application for a conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair, I have two questions, if you don't mind. The first one, did we, did we look at the definition of sawmill? And does it require certain aspects to actually be considered a sawmill? I mean, is it just the cutting of wood? Or is it the cutting of wood, the drying with a kiln and all that whole process? And I ask that because if he has to be labeled as a sawmill, but he's only doing one aspect of it, how do we need to look at, look at legally from that perspective?
Have not looked at how a sawmill is defined and of course, as in the law, unfortunately, there's so many gray areas. Just where, where is it? In what circumstance is it a hobby versus when it becomes a, a business? And you know, so maybe he's doing some woodworking and at what, and maybe cutting down some trees? And at what point does it become a commercial sawmill business? That's a question, but I have not looked at the issue.
Okay. And then my other question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. If, and this is primarily for Kathy, if someone was cutting logs on their property, splitting them with their log splitter and then selling it off as firewood, is that, how does that fit in with all of this?
Um, that, it's kind of a little bit of a gray area. Yeah, and I have had conversations with the applicant as well. He, there is nothing that would allow me in our zoning ordinance to tell him that he cannot have a sawmill. So if he just does this for his own personal, he's milling the logs and remodeling his house or making his own furniture or something along those lines, our ordinance does not make it so that we have the ability to tell him that he has to get rid of his sawmill. It's the business aspect of it that puts it into the realm of needing a conditional use permit.
And that business is seven to seven at night, so it's seven in the morning until seven at night. But he, here's my, is that the neighbors, most of the neighbors are in, saying they want it in their neighborhood.
Right.
But how big can it grow is my bottom line before? And can the conditional use kick in and shut them back down because it says it's too big? Or it's too much now?
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can I ask a question? It looks like from the property that there are piles of logs and boards and stuff sitting around the property? And that's not considered a nuisance?
Uh, we have had people consider that a nuisance before, an attractant for rodents and things along those lines.
Okay, but, but I mean, what I'm getting at is this is no different than someone who lives on a property that has decided to have, create slash piles or store up firewood for the next fifty years? Or, you know, mill some boards for a future project ten years from now? You know, you know, stuff accumulates as long as it's neatly arranged, it's organized, you know, then it's not considered a nuisance, correct?
Correct.
That's not the issue here, right?
Right.
None of this stuff, no one's complained about the way it looks, right?
Not to my understanding, no.
Okay. Thank you.
The complaints have come into our ordinance enforcement officer, but from my understanding, that's not what the complaints have been about. And to answer your question, Commissioner Hadcock, condition number one and condition number two, if you were to approve this conditional use permit, does kind of a, a little bit prevent him from expanding it to his entire property? He's only allowed one, he would only be allowed one portable sawmill. Everything would have to be in, stored inside an enclosed structure when he's not using it.
I appreciate that, Kathy, but you had two building permits on this property with no. You had two buildings with no permits. Are they gonna comply in the future? That's, that's, that's the only thing sometimes when, when people are doing things, you know, sometimes you just don't know and I understand that because you haven't been in the planning department and you haven't been around. But you're also a, um, let's see, I am the recipient of Leger Hill emails because I've been the treasurer's secretary of this area and nobody's ever got a building permit or anything in that area? That you would know that? You see what I'm saying? I'm, I, I see it both ways. I see they, boy, their property sure is clean, they're keeping it nice, their neighbors want it like that. I, I mean, are saying obviously they don't mind that this is in the neighborhood. And I guess I wouldn't mind having them buy me, they look like they're pretty. But are they gonna keep complying and there's a conditional use? I'm thinking out loud here, sorry.
Well, Laurie.
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, in defense of the homeowner, the, the buildings that didn't have an approved building permit were a greenhouse and a woodshed. And I'm betting that we could find a lot of unpermitted greenhouses and woodsheds if we look for them in the county. I mean, in defense, in defense of the homeowner, I mean, it's not like they have a, you know, some weird building.
They didn't put up a barn.
Yeah.
It's a twenty-four by thirty-eight woodshed.
But it's, it's still relatively small.
Yeah, we can, but we still, if you're in charge of a neighborhood area, you pretty much, you know, you're gonna know if you have to have building permits and stuff, I would hope, in that area.
But you also may not know if they're grandfathered structures or whatever. So I guess I would defend the homeowner in that situation.
I think the report did actually, by aerial photographs, identify that they were built since nineteen ninety-four, so they are.
But, but, but I mean, you know, sometimes you can't tell by looking at a building how old it is.
Yeah.
That appears on addition was constructed between twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen.
Barb?
Um, Kathy, a question for you. So if the homeowner moved his saw, sawing to, sawmill to an attached garage, he'd be okay?
No, I think that's the question I asked originally, so.
That could then possibly be considered a home occupation, maybe. He'd still wouldn't be outside of the realm of needing a conditional use permit.
Oh, that's not what I understood, maybe, Michelle.
No, I think that's, that's a fair argument, the way the definition of home occupation reads. And it is a little, it's not well worded, but a use conducted entirely within an enclosed structure other than a mobile home, which is clearly incidental and secondary to the residential occupancy, does not change the character of the property. So arguably, if it was conducted from an attached garage, it might be determined in home occupation. And then you would have to turn, turn to the five criteria factors that are set out when you consider a conditional use permit. Now, I would point out, let me first sit down, that because this particular proposed use is not identified for low residential districts, that the commission almost needs to make a preliminary finding. I believe the listed COPs are meant to be illustrative, not exclusive. But if they're not listed, this board does need to consider whether the proposed use is contrary to the intent of our low residential district. In other words, is this proposed use consistent with uses you would find in a low residential district? And if you find it is consistent, then of course you would move on to the factors that are set out in five ten for any conditional use permit application.
I guess a comment I would make is I'm, I'm glad to hear that, I guess we're getting some support for tightening what I, can, home use, or conditional home use. I think we've really stretched that in the past. I mean, the two incidents we cited earlier, you know, I, I questioned that where you basically are staging a roofing business out of a home and we're calling that home occupation. It just doesn't seem, you know, that same time, someone's got four acres sitting in the hills. I mean, I have a wooded lot, I run my saw. Sometime on Saturday, if I've gotta chop down trees, I'm running a chainsaw most of the day. And then I'd run my splitter, the difference, I guess, I'm not selling wood, wood. So I mean, then, you know, the business aspect comes into it. So I don't, to me, this is a difficult one, but I, I think one of the conditions that we need to consider is, you know, I guess, I don't know what you base on proof, but one of the letters, I mean, it's already impacting values of homes or ability to sell a home. If that is honest and true, we don't know that. But I mean, that's certainly a claim that's been made in our items. And that's one of the conditions for looking at whether it's impacting the value of homes.
So Chairman, is there any other complaints? Is there anybody in the audience that is here about the sawmill?
Well, I think, let's, before we go to the, let's go to the applicants, give them a chance to speak and answer questions first too.
I have two questions, Mr. Chair.
Rich.
I think I understand where the letter from Mr. Jansen, and I think I understand where he lives relative to the property owner. But the other email that we got here from Kelly Sneave, where's that property in relation to the landowner's property?
The two complaint properties, where are they at, Kathy?
One's right there, I know that.
Which one?
Jansen's is right there.
Right.
That's the complaint.
That's one.
And while she's looking that up, see, the other thing I wanted to point out is, that's kind of why I was asking the sawmill, is that the appropriate categorization of this small home business? I mean, it's one portable sawmill.
Seven to seven is a pretty substantial business.
Well, and we don't have a condition that you can look at that, but I think typically a saw running is a higher frequency and.
It's actually that condition on here, is that what you meant?
Well, not noise, because I mean, to me, uh, somebody running their lawnmower, because I mean, it's, it's been quoted that the motor on there is the same as the lawnmower. Saturdays, I hear a lot of lawnmower rings going, but as soon as someone does the radial arm saw or circular saw, you can hear that buzzing for a long ways away just because of the frequency.
I don't need a conditional use permit, Sig.
Yeah, I know.
So someone, someone's saying it's not.
Mr. Chair.
Um, I looked up sawmill. The definition of sawmill is a place or building which can be sawed. It's a sawmill.
So my shop can be a sawmill, because I cut boards in half all the time.
It's sawed into planks, spores, et cetera, by machinery.
Well, that's the difference there, you're taking a raw product and changing it into boards versus cutting boards that are ready.
And you're selling.
I believe the address, Kathy, was one one seven oh two, is that?
Yep, it's undeveloped right now. This is their property and this is the Thomas's property.
And then the Jan, uh, Jansen property is that one in the quarter, right?
This one, yep, the other undeveloped one.
Those are the only two complaints?
No.
Okay, where's the other ones?
Mr. Donofrio is here, he's a neighbor as well, I'm not certain, where do you live?
Right in the middle of the two.
Okay, this one right here? Okay.
Well, uh, let's give the applicants a chance to respond to questions. You've heard some things, so I mean, give you an opportunity to present your arguments.
Good morning, thanks for your time, Jeremiah Thomas.
I'm Angela Thomas.
I guess I'm gonna start by saying I think the scale of my operation has been blown completely out of scale. Since Kathy visited too, I did run some different numbers. She had two point eight hours of sawmill use per week. That was including all my portable sawmilling I've did. I've went numerous places around the hills milling and then personal use for my father-in-law's place and my full remodel. My modified hours, I figure one point four, one point four eight hours a week, one hundred and eighteen hours of use on the sawmill since I've owned it in September of twenty fifteen. Sneave's lot, the highlighted one up there, he claims to have lost a sale over that lot in the last couple of weeks, the last month, whatever. I mean, what it boils down to is that lot owner has been negligent in the mitigation of pine beetle for years up there with bunch of slop over of pine beetles flying on Donna Freo's, me, everybody in there. And I've been a part of removing those trees and cutting those down. Some of those turned into my own firewood, some of them turned into boards for my own tables I built and stuff like that. And as far as the property value is decreasing up there, I'm seeing a trend upward. And I also believe that everybody around me that's a year-round resident there would also verify that I keep my place cleaner than most in there. I mean, you can go up there right now and the, the one picture Kathy had up of the log deck behind that, you see a brush pile? That's yard cleanup this year, there's not even sawdust in it. That was burned in November, right when I got conditions in November. Keep everything clean. Can hardly tell the operation exists right now. So for the corner lot, Jansen's, I can't, there's no solid evidence that there's gonna be depreciation of value up there, I don't see. My taxes are going up, everybody else's are, values are going up up there. And the seven to seven, there's no way I'm ever gonna meet that anyway. As you all probably know, the pine beetle epidemic's on the downfall. You don't see any red top trees out there. I know there was one. You don't see any red top trees out there, I know there was one comment in Jansen's letter too stating that I'm outsourcing, bringing logs in from out, out of my subdivision, which is very true, I've taken logs that I've cut from up by Rochford, still in Pennington County, and had neighbors haul them in for me that I milled them. Utilizing and getting rid of that epidemic, helping from my part. So I think I've been instrumental in that. The one-point-four-eight hours that I've been doing for business purposes, I see that even dropping. My goal's to pay that mill off and someday build my own lo- my own house somewhere on my own timber lot. So I really see the use of the mill going down. I'm listening to that.
I don't think so. My, my only comment is that I am the tre- I was the treasurer and secretary, uh, as you referenced, of our road district, but we had nothing to do with anyone's permits ever with the county. Um, all I did was really write checks for the snow plowing. So it's not something that I've had ever ex- had experience with, we had building permits for our biggest buildings, like our garage and things like that, but I had no idea that I needed one for my greenhouse. So it's, um, it's been a really intense learning experience for both of us going through this process. Um, but we're just trying to make a living, and it's not like he's operating his sawmill from seven in the morning until seven at night, that's not ever the case.
I'm gone twelve hours every day, Monday through Friday, so.
Well, maybe changing the hours on that.
Did not put those hours on there.
So it's, it's, for me, I, it's, you know, people that do wanna sleep from in the morning at seven if it isn't any kind of noise, lawnmower noise or anything, I don't want a lawnmower going off at seven in the morning by my house. So I'm listening to what you're saying on the hours, so maybe they can change that, so it would help the neighbors, so they don't think they're having a full-blown seven-to-seven business going on, does that make sense?
It's way smaller scale than that, and if there would've been a face-to-face, I was willing to meet, you know, I was willing to compromise, but never had the chance, so.
So if you could change those hours and that would be comparable for your business, what would the hours be?
I'd be fine with eight to five, even nine to five on weekends.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question? Um, can you describe, um, I, I noticed you have some, some boards in some of the pictures. Can you describe like how often somebody comes to pick those up, or how much, does it, how much maybe additional traffic it might create to your?
I'd say there, while I was doing this for the last twenty months, I would say on average, two to three vehicles a week.
Okay.
When you're bringing in logs, I mean, are.
At the most, yeah.
Are, are, are this pickup loads, or this a big, uh, you know, like a timber cutting vehicle?
Well, that, that load of trees I cut up by Rochford, that was a log truck load of timber I cut. It was a log truck load. Pop truck.
We have a neighbor that, that, um.
I have a neighbor that helps me out and also helps get rid of pine beetles and.
Cassie, I, I don't know if I'm remembering this right, maybe you have better memory than me, it seemed like a year or two ago where we had some controversy, uh, up by Sheridan Lake about moving logs, and I thought even the Forest Service weighed in, this is actually the year, there's some potential of spreading by hauling logs off where the infestation occurred?
Um, I can't say I remember that one.
I, I think.
We had someone that wanted to put a sawmill in, and it was a siding issue, it was related to, um.
I thought part of the testimony was moving logs from other areas.
We've had a couple, we've had a couple of those, there was one where it was located, yeah, because one of them was located north of Rapid City, remember, that's where they wanted to locate the mill?
Yeah, country road.
And that's what they were saying, it was better to move them way away from the trees, because they can only fly so far.
Well, and, I mean, the trees I cut were post-flight, which is August, September, and I'm milling them in the winter. But that particular load I brought in from elsewhere is what I'm talking about, that was milled in the wintertime months, so.
Yeah, that one we were talking about, how they, they weren't allowed to transport, um, logs that had active infestations in it during the season and stuff, but you have an understanding of when you should and shouldn't be doing that, it sounds like.
That's my full-time job, too, so, yeah.
You've got it.
Yeah, we've got two different cases like that, that I can recall.
But, I mean, like Sneave's lot there, I mean, it's a dead, jacksrod fire mess is what it is, and the lots that I've helped people, uh, seven-two-two there, I know I took over almost two-hundred trees off that. I mean, the people that live in that subdivision, year-round support what I'm doing. It's the people that have vacant lots, or people who are there on average six months a year, so.
Well, Chairman, how, what do you do for a living, Mr. Thomas?
I'm a timber sale administrator with the Forest Service.
Okay, that, that might help to say that right away, 'cause that means you kinda know what you're doing.
I, I just didn't want.
Well, it helps me with the decision of, well, I was wondering why, I was like, man, he's got his stuff.
And he used to be a firefighter, too, so he knows about burning piles and.
See, some of these things that we know in the background, it's gonna kinda help us with the positive for, um, are you really gonna do what you say, and do you really know how to do it? So I heard, I caught that in your, I do this for a living, so.
Yeah, I'm a subject matter expert on this stuff then, yes.
I, I have, uh, no, do you sell the planks, or did I hear you say that you make some furniture out of it, or you, or?
Well, I, I've been remodeling the inside of my house, too, so, I've been, I've built my vanity, and I'm building my own stuff, yeah.
Well, I'm just kinda wondering is, if you were building furniture, and, and that I could see as a home occupation, but part of making furniture is you need to cut the wood, so I, I don't know if that would change it or not, that's why I was just kinda curious, and.
Can I build something in my garage at that point? I mean.
Still not an attached garage, though, to, I mean, we can't build an attached garage on our house. 'Cause it's, 'cause of the topography. So it's, it's really close, but it's not attached.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, is it possible to run the, the mill inside of your shed?
If I wanna die of lung disease or something, probably, yeah.
A way you can vent it?
What's that?
Is there a way you can vent it?
I probably could, but honestly, I think with everything rattling and the steel roof and all that, and you're running that thing inside, I think the noise is gonna be.
Worse.
That's my opinion, but.
Additionally, when he built the addition on the barn, that we did not have the permit for, and we went back and got it last week, it was open, the sides were open, so that he could have a roof over him while he was working, but, um, it's windy a lot, so the, the weather was coming in the side and blowing everything all around and swirling it, so that's why he ended up moving the sides, um, to cover the front of that, so.
Plus, he just wanted to be out of sight, out of mind and clean for neighbors, I mean, it's what I'm doing, I'm not, it's not a pigsty up there.
Could you address maybe the permit issue, why permits weren't gotten passed? Maybe this is a negative side, but if you're at Forest Service, you certainly realize permits are required for everything.
Well, the green, the greenhouse, I didn't know on size, I'll admit that, and both issues are gonna be on me.
Or do you mean the conditional use permit?
No, the building permit.
Oh, yeah.
There was one obtained, must've been twenty thirteen, and then I added on, like she said, the top of that barn, and then eventually closed in, that was just negligence on my part.
He doesn't get to Rapid very often.
So you paid the fine and the double fine on it? There you go.
Everything should be paid now. Hopefully.
Questions for them? Do you have another question?
Just, just for the.
Oh.
Uh, the others, the applicants, I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the audience wishing to speak, please come on.
Good morning, my name's, uh, Monday Donofrio.
And I'm Brendan Donofrio.
We live, uh, right across the street, you saw our lot there on the, uh, depiction. Um, we just want to, uh, the conditional use permit, we just wanna give our, our spin on it, I listened to what you said here and the legal version of it, but, um, uh, we live within, uh, about two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the sawmill operations. Um, we, we, you know, op- operating a home occupation business, or whatever the way, whatever spin you wanna put on it, um, in a low-density residential, uh, district. You know, let's think about that, we heard all the comments here, but this is not an ag land, it's not limited ag land, it's, it's, uh, it's operating in, in, in a residential zone. It just so happens that you have three-point X acres. Um, and you know, it's, it's a, it's a noisy business, too. The, the saw itself has noise, uh, you know, not much more than a lawnmower, but if it runs for hours, you know, a couple hours, then, you know, that's, generates noise. We haven't mentioned the chainsaw. Chainsaw was, uh, is vital to this operation, it sizes the logs, and it cuts up the, uh, you know, the, the excess into firewood. And, um, so basically the noise, the noise is a byproduct of the business. Uh, you had mentioned that, hey, I cut wood, I cut, you know, my firewood, my property, that's fine. But this is in addition to that, this is tightening this, you know, this, making this noise, generating this noise in a residential area above and beyond what it would be. Give a little background, he's been operating the sawmill for the past couple years, and I've seen the insidious growth of this from a small, you know, uh, you know, small operation to the purchase of a big saw to big piles of logs. So it started out small, and just like any business, it's gonna grow into something greater, you know? Um, I'm gonna comment, and no doubt about it, Jeremiah works hard, and he's very talented at what he does. Um, I admire his work ethic, and I, and his desire to support his family with extra, extra money. Uh, he's worked for us in the past, he's, he's done, he's cut our bug trees down, and he's done other work for us that we paid him for. Um, to me, it's not all about the bug trees, it, those bug trees becomes the raw materials for his business. Okay, so we look at some of the, um, some of the ordinances, you know, it, it specifically allows sawmills in general ag. And, uh, it also specifically allows with a CUP, sawmills in a limited ag district. Uh, but there's no mention of sawmills in a low-density residential as a use. Um, I mean, it, it's for a reason, it's residential zone, I mean, just think about that, you gotta keep that in perspective. It's not, it's not ag land or, or limited ag land. Uh, portable saw, um, I, like I say, the, there's not much noise output from the, from the saw, but if you, uh, he advertises business on Facebook, and if we wanna call him up, I don't know if Cassie can do that, we can call, he's got a video of saw operating. And, uh, he's wearing ear, ear protection, you know, of course, the, so it does generate some noise. Now, again, it dissipates over, over, uh, distance to our property, and like I said, the saw isn't the big part of this. Um, most of the noise comes from the use of a chainsaw, and, um, and sometime that occurs at seven o'clock in the morning, on a Saturday or Sunday, so. I don't know about you, but, you know, kinda try to enjoy the peaceful black hills, and here's a chainsaw operating at probably a hundred-and-sixteen to a hundred-and-twenty decibels at seven o'clock in the morning. So, that, that's the big part of this, that noise generated because of the business. Um, business itself, it's Thomas Timmworks, he established it in twenty fifteen LLC, he, like I say, he advertises us on Facebook. Um, so I just, uh, took some snapshots of Facebook for you, just to show what, uh, what he's got, and he has, you know, pictures of, uh, of things, but. I don't know when you. That's a, a bar he built for a big business in Keystone. So, um, so, you know, it, it's more than just a hobby. You know, it has grown from a hobby of building furniture, or upgrading his house, or his in-laws' house. It's a, it's, 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 um, it's, it's built up over the years, past two years, into a full-fledged business. Uh, definitely got it written here as a business defined in dictionary dot com, an occupation, profession, or trade. So I'm not sure how that works with the ordinances as a, as a home occupation, but business is an occupation, you know, anyways, license. But what's the effects on our property, you know, we talked about, you, you've already discussed about the, uh, you know, the values of property, um, and, you know, I don't know if anybody's selling property, if they're getting less for it or not, I, I can't say, but it could have an effect on that. And one thing has effects on the enjoyment of our Black Hills property, you know, this business affects our enjoyment. Um, at the end of section two oh four, um, it states the impact of proposed use on adjacent properties will be a major consideration by the board. Uh, that the impact will be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, won't reduce property values, adjacent vacant properties will not be negatively impacted, and noise and such will not constitute a nuisance. So that's right in your, right in your ordinance. Here's a view from my, our front porch. And this looks like some deliveries that occurred at, at the property itself. Um, in conclusion, um, I think granting the conditional permit as written would give full authority and freedom to, uh, run the business without limits or restrictions. I mean, we've talked about some time restrictions, but, uh, but it could, you know, I guess, like I say, a sawmill grow from where it is from two years ago to today, what's it gonna be like in the future? You know, if it's not bug wood, could it be other types of wood, other types of furniture, not necessarily on bug wood? Um, the decision here sets a precedent for other low-density residential neighborhoods in the county. I mean, you're gonna see this again, I mean, can I run a body shop from my house? Can I run a car lot? You know, can I put in a CUP for that? Since we're, we're opening the door to, to those types of things, all throughout the county and LDR districts. Um, if the commission, uh, decides to deny the CUP, uh, and with utmost sincerity, uh, we hope the Thomas family can find an alter location, you know, to run their sawmill operation. My suggestion would be to, to lease a piece of ag land from a farmer, and do the milling part there, and maybe store it at his house. I mean, I, just a suggestion, you know, I just, um, but no matter how you slice it, whatever way you perceive this, the bottom line is, it's conducting a business in a residential zone, in violation of Pennington County ordinances. There is, there's another resident in our subdivision that has a business with a conditional use permit, and you wouldn't know that business was there. It's a taxidermy business, enclosed inside a building, you wouldn't know it's there. I think that's the spirit and intent of the ordinances that are written, the way they're written.
Frank, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, we try to be good neighbors and get along with everyone, but I just wanted people to know that I have personally lost sleep over this, laying there with questions running through my mind about, is this gonna affect the value of my property, uh? Why is this happening, uh? Why would anyone want or think it would be okay to have a sawmill as a business in a residential area? Why are we faced with losing friendships because of this? Is a biggie, uh? And why does this make us the bad guys? It just doesn't seem right to me, you know? And, and I don't really like feeling that we were forced to defend our rights here to peacefully enjoy our, uh, Black Hills property. And, uh, in doing so, it makes us appear to be the bad guys when we were only trying to uphold what is right and lawful. And, you know, it's just, I feel really terrible about having to. And, you know, it's just, I feel really terrible about having to be there to defend that, you know?
Yeah, my final thoughts to folks, would you want a business across the street from your home? No matter where it is? This type of business? And that's, that's all we have. Thanks for your time today. You have any questions for us?
Questions for them?
I do. What, your first name again, sir?
Monday.
Monday. Like Monday?
No. No, spelled, spelled different, M-A-U-N-D-Y. Mondy, actually, I say Monday so people remember.
You said if there maybe was restrictions for this business, it might come up with some solution that he could still do his business and still you could find your peace in your neighborhood? Or is that not an option?
I, you know, I, I, I surely consider it. I think it should be, uh, consideration, because, uh, like I say, you know, when they say operates a saw, we gave the statistics, Jeremiah gave the statistics on the saw and how much it was used.
Right.
Well, you know, that's only a piece of the puzzle on this business. It's, it's the logs, it's the saw, it's the milling, everything, it all goes in. It's not just one little, the saw is just a portion of it, you know?
Right, cuz, cuz I'm seeing, and that's why I said, operating a, um, chainsaw at certain times is, is not appropriate, um, in the neighborhood. I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, um, whenever they felt like they wanted to do their business, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But I also think there's a solution for you guys. Um, he does this for a living. Can he do something, uh, to put restrictions on his home business as a sawmill, so it'd make you feel comfortable that he would do it, um, with respect? How about that?
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, I'm not the only. I'm, I'm not the only neighbor, you know, I mean, there's other folks that, you know, the line across the street, you know, uh, had, you know, uh, some issues with it. Yeah, I mean, you know, um, one of the things I think they put in their, uh, initial application was that, you know, they're early risers.
Right.
And early morning in the Black Hills, five o'clock, it's bright, sunny, it's ready to go, it's like midday somewhere else, you know? So, I mean, and Jeremiah likes to work early. So, I mean, and that's, that's his. I like to get up early too and, and be, have that cup of coffee out on the front porch too, you know, and.
So if he ran, Mr. Monday, if he ran his business at later times, like nine to five, and that was the restriction, um, would that be appropriate, um, for us to change that? So at least you'd get, you know, you'd get your night piece and your morning piece, and in between he could run a business or do his sawmill there? I mean, uh, or is that just gonna bother you anytime he runs a business between nine and five?
Yeah. And, and again, uh, I'm not there a hundred percent of the time. My job takes me away.
Right.
And, uh, I can't tell you how often I'm there. I get called away as necessary to fill positions.
Right.
In my job, and, um, Brenda's there a lot, sometimes she goes, she can go with me as well, so, um, we're not there a hundred percent of the time, but I don't think that's the, that's the case. But I, I think what you're getting at is, can, yeah, I, I'd be willing to work something out. You know, I, I, I have no problem with that.
I guess that's what I'm saying, because, um, I, I'm seeing, I don't know if the board is, but I'm seeing both sides, where you have some, a man that, you know, wants to be respectful and have, you know, do his work, and neighbors that should have, um, and, and the applicant should have the respect to know that you don't operate your saw or, or, you know, during times where people, you know, their livelihoods is, or their peaceful time is in the mornings, nights, and heck, I don't know, maybe during the day for Ms. Brenda too, but, um, I just think there's a solution here that we can figure out, and I'm not gonna probably do it today, but, uh, maybe the board has some other questions.
Mr. Chair. What you're going down the road, it kinda reminds me of the committee that we're sitting on, where we're talking about some of these other things that we're dealing with. We put even the decibel sound off of the property line, even for businesses that are already in a, in a business district, or, uh.
Right.
I just lost my thought train on that one, but, uh, wherever it's zoned, you know, we've, we're, we're looking at putting restrictions on them for their decibel sound that comes off of the property. I mean, even, even this is something where you could look at that and say, what is it at your property line if you're operating said material? You're right, I don't know if we can come to a, an easy conclusion today.
Well, and this isn't just a negotiation between these two couples, I guess, there's others that may wanna speak, um, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Can I ask you, can I ask you how long you guys have lived in your present home?
We've owned it since, uh, two thousand and five, um, and then we, uh, full-timed it, uh, since, uh, two thousand and eleven.
So since, you've owned it since two thousand and five, you lived there part-time, and then since two thousand and eleven, you, you're a full-time resident?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
They're there first.
Was there anyone else wishing to speak before?
I just, one more, one more thing on your comment, uh, that I, you know, if, if we put restrictions on, I mean, I just worry about, uh, no disrespect here, but enforcement of that, what happens? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm speaking for ourselves, I'm not speaking for the rest of the neighborhood or.
Well, if you or any of the neighbors complained, he could get his conditional use taken off.
Well, you, I, I think, I'm sure that's a condition, we always have that reviewed in one year or, or a complaint basis, I mean, and that complaint basis, then they need to wait for a year. If, if you feel like there's conditions that were approved, if this gets approved, that are being violated, then you can complain anytime this would get brought, be looked into by ordinance enforcement.
I hate to have it come to that, I hate to be able to always be on edge or anything like that, that's the only problem, it's like, it's gotta be something.
For Mr. Monday, that, i- if he's not complying with the neighborhood and what's going on with that, it's not, you're gonna, i- if it's five to eight and you made eight o'clock, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Understand, yeah.
He's going at seven o'clock, um, it's, then you have every reason. So, um, just, you don't look like you're just gonna, and.
No.
Just because.
No, not.
Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm pretty easygoing and, and.
You just wrote up there that tells me that you want solution for this, and if maybe they could find solution for you and with you, um, it would, it would make you satisfy with this business being next to you.
Other questions for Mondy and Brenda? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Couple over here.
Thank you very much. My name is Don Askew. I'm, uh, president of the road district, and I, I wanted to speak for the neighbors. I helped with the petition that we put together and transferred to you folks, and I think you've referenced that already. Uh, my wife and I, Marie, uh, live, uh, within a hundred yards of their house, our house to their house, our properties are joined, we're just up the hill. And, um, I have a letter written, and now I, I shouldn't reference part of it, because I, it was anonymous, I didn't know who it was, I suspected it might have been Mondy who said this, because, uh, he had come to me, uh, prior to this, and talked about what he could do, and, and the problem then was that he did not want to talk directly with Jeremiah about the issue, it might have been worked out at that time, and, um, because of that, I was able to talk to Jeremiah, and he had already offered up, uh, concession on doing it at different times, and has changed his timing on cutting and sawing to a later time, uh, and especially when Mondy's out of town. Mondy and his wife both travel.
I would caution you, it's not about the, a couple expressing their opinion. It's about this, and a staff recommendation is actually for denial without any dissent from ownership, so I mean, you should be addressing, n- not trying to pit the neighbors against each other.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I understand where Mondy came from, and I understand.
But, but I mean, he's not part of the application. You're, you should be addressing the application.
Oh, well, okay, well, we'll go ahead with that. I've, uh, I addressed all the neighbors in the neighborhood, uh, that I could reach. Some of them are out of town, I don't know who they are. But those that I talked to signed up, and, uh, and I've talked to them since, and asked if this was a problem to them, the noise. It's not for me, it's not for them. Uh, the only ones that have had any problems reported by were Mondy, so I wanted to bring that up to you. I wanna tell you that property value-wise, that's nothing true with me. Uh, mine went up two hundred and forty percent last year, so I think it's, uh, it's holding its value pretty good. My wife and I hope that, uh, you'll carefully consider our request to grant this to them. You've got a family here that works very, very hard, we know very well, because Angie's my daughter. And, um, it just so happens that we moved down here to be close to our grandkids, we moved close to them, we've owned the property, uh, for about ten years now. And, um, just built the house in the last few years. But the point is, we intend to stay, we don't see our property values going down, we know that there's a number of neighbors who are totally in favor of him being able to do what he does, and he's helped, uh, the majority of all of them that have lost trees, we've lost forty on our property alone to the bugs, and, uh, he's helped us clean that up. I don't have anything more to add, except that I appreciate the time here, and I wish it could have all been worked out prior, but, uh, here we are. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Don? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Uh, staff's recommendation is for denial, although staff has, uh, offered twelve conditions if we decide to move forward. From discussions, I'm assuming we may wanna, uh, modify item three, which would be the daily, uh, operation hours, and that seemed, uh, okay by the applicant from comments made. Cassie, did you have anything else? Again, staff's recommendation is for denial based on basically the non-fit, uh, in accordance with the ordinances, however, conditions are listed. Does anyone want to vet your motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve, uh, conditional use permit seventeen eight, and that we modify condition three to, um, to limit operation from nine AM to five PM.
All days of the week?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment? Um, uh, now that they've obtained the building permits for the structures that they didn't have building permits for, um, condition number five is no longer relevant, so I don't know if you wanna.
And delete condition five.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Further discussion?
I will probably vote against this, only because, um, I'm gonna have to agree with staff. I, I think because, Mr. Thompson, you do this for a living, and I understand that, but it's also low-density residential and, and sawmill, just the word sawmill in the neighborhood, I believe, um, people might be affected trying to sell something next to what's called a sawmill. Maybe if they come to visit you, um, like me, I'd like to approve it, but I also see the Monday's point of view, low-density residential, um, maybe if there could be a different area where you could move your, your sign and, and then do your woodwork and stuff in the building. You sound like a heck of a worker, and you know what you're doing, so, um, I, I, I still have to go that it's a low-density residential area, so.
Mr. Chair, with regret, I have to agree with Commissioner Hancock. It's low-density residential, and with the greatest sympathy for the applicant, I have to go with the zoning law.
I guess, Deb, for, for once, I think I'm agreeing with you. That's not always true, but anyway.
It's all good.
I, I kinda feel the same way, as I've, I've felt like even some of the things that we have in the past, of we've stretched the intent of what a home occupation is, you know? I, I really do, and I mean, I've, I've questioned it on the ones that have been approved in the past, and I, I just don't think that, uh, our ordinance really supports it from, uh, you know, the property values is improved in one way or another, I can't, you know, take one person's word for it, or, you know, one comment, you don't know, but I mean, there's certainly noise, um, even potential sawdust, I don't know, uh, that blows on other properties, I don't know, but, uh, I, I guess to me it isn't appropriate, and I, I wish it was appropriate, I wish you had limited ag, there wouldn't be a question at all. You know, maybe the suggestion of the, the mill is operated on, of leased parcel, I, I don't know what works, but I just think in a low-density residential, we're really stretching it, and, you know, given that you have three and a half acres, I mean, it seems like that should be plenty to do things in the hills, but I just, um, I can't support it either, so.
And this, this has nothing to do with the Mondays, this has to do with, uh, the facts of the low-density residential. If they weren't here, I would still question what staff had put down and why, and only because of a, it, it's affecting people by sawing, so.
Further discussion, further comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm a little torn too in the aspect of, that I know some people, whenever they're starting a business, they start, it usually starts out as a hobby, and then it grows, but you don't have the, um, the income or the, uh, the reserves to go purchase another piece of property, so you grow it at your piece of property until you can go and put it somewhere else. I, I did that with my particular venture so far, um, however I am in ag, so it's a little different, um, because it's what I do is used there. But the, the issue that I'm torn on is that, um, I think it might be misclassified, I know we define sawmill, I think that would be, my concern with this is I think it might be misclassified, I mean, it's, it's wood processing, I mean, if someone had, was turning out furniture out of their, you know, their garage, would we call them a furniture factory? No, we would, we would call it a home occupation again there. So that's where I'm concerned with this, I mean, it's a small amount of, of work, um, I, I think there's still a possibility for something to be done with this, or to be proposed as a different occupation, per se. The way it stands for a sawmill, I, I would have to disagree and not vote for it, because it says specifically sawmill, and I don't think sawmill is a, is a use in this particular area, but I, I would venture for you to consider other ways to, to present it, because, you know, if it's wood processing, maybe there's another avenue for, for you in this.
Would you, um, since I'm the motion maker, would you like me to reword condition one as, um, allowing for use of a limited wood, of a wood processing, of wood processing on the property? And not mention the sawmill, or just include that it, it, it may include operation of a portable sawmill?
I am, but I don't know if that affects, because of the, how it was, um, publicly notified, I don't, I don't know if that affects all that aspects of it.
Are we, are we allowed to make that change?
There's, guys, there's a deny without prejudice, where they could bring it back as something else, and then maybe work with the Mondays and turn this into something else. Instead of go from guessing here and changing the name, I think there's some solution there.
Well, I guess, Michelle, I guess I'd appreciate, you're probably guessing that we wanna hear from you, uh, cuz, cuz I mean, to me, it goes back to the definition of, you know, home occupation, and if we've stretched it in the past, and I mean, it's, uh, and if it's the wrong practice, should we be continuing?
Absolutely. Michelle Hoffman, on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office, when we looked at the issues that were recently presented to us, that was one of our concerns. How far does the definition of home occupation get stretched, and do we have individuals start putting up barns and other structures as their home occupation business grows? And that's not, I mean, it's not that type of business that's intended un- under the statute, and, and as far as amending the motion, it doesn't change the use, whether you call it wood processing or sawmill, it doesn't change the use. And when you look.
The concern I had, to me, we're playing semantic schemes, but we aren't changing the process.
Exactly, and, and, you know, when you have a list of, of proposed uses that are specifically identified, we go directly to the five factors that are set out in five-ten, but when we've got a use that hasn't, hasn't been expressly prohibited, but it hasn't also been identified as, uh, a conditional use that's permitted, you, I believe you already've kinda hit at the, on the very first issue, you have to decide whether the use, no matter how you characterize it, or, you know, the words are used to, to define it, is that use consistent with the intent, and of, in this case, the residential, low residential district? So that's the first question, is the proposed use consistent with a use you would see within a low residential district? If you think it's consistent, then you would go on to the five factors, because there's no way anyone can identify every potential use that a homeowner might wanna use their property for. So that's why you have leeway, you're not limited by that list of conditional uses, but you still need to question, is it a use consistent with whatever district you're dealing with?
Can I ask, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
And so then, I guess, then it comes to a citing issue. In my mind, this is a consistent home use for someone who has a wooded lot in the hills. It's not a consistent home use for someone who lives in Rapid Valley and hauls everything and does that.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is that, you know, if someone lives in the hills, then, and that's, to me, this is a citing issue.
Absolutely, I, I think that's the, the difficult, um, uh, part of my job sometimes is, is communicating the fact that you have to consider all the facts and circumstances in each individual case. So that certainly would be, uh, a fact that you consider what, in terms of whether it's an appropriate use within this particular. it's an appropriate use within this particular neighborhood and district.
That's where I'm at. You know, in my mind, if somebody lives on a wooded lot in the hills, processing trees in whatever fashion is going to be maybe a daily activity.
And...
As a homeowner.
And, Mr. Chair, this might help too. Number eight in section two oh C says neighborhood commercial uses as regulated by section three oh two, correct? Section three oh two established areas for those commercial facilities which are especially useful in close proximity to residential areas. It fits within what they're doing in that particular area. Because it's proximity to the residential areas while minimizing any undesirable impact. We're trying to minimize an undesirable impact.
Oh.
I, I guess, I, you know, I've said this on vacation rental and I seem to lose this argument, but I mean, to me, when we have zoning districts, if we all sudden open up everything to every zoning district, we watered down the intent of a zoning district and basically, to me, a zoning district or residential is a covenant with the county in that area that's saying it's gonna be residential. And, and I would not question this at all, this limited ag or egg. And, and it could be on, on, you know, as a parcel that just barely fits into limited ag.
And in looking at the home occupation definition, that's one of the issues we struggled with. It was a case where we thought, well, why wouldn't we allow this? But you have to look at the ordinances as they're written and also the types of problems they're created to prevent. And sometimes you start making exceptions and it becomes a slippery slope. But ultimately, it's, it's, it will be up to this commission to decide whether the proposed use fits with, within a limited residential district.
And I'll keep saying, there's a, there's a solution, denying without prejudice and finding that solution instead of going full-blown and having sawmill or people sawing seven to seven AM, even if you change the times. I think it's a lot easier to deny without prejudice so they don't have to pay again. Am I correct, Cassie?
Right.
And figure out some solution with the neighbors that would work and not turn it into a home occupation and set a precedent.
Mr. Chair?
In a way that's gonna be unbenefit.
Addressing Lori. Lori, all your arguments were good except you left out the word "commercial". And this is a commercial business and Mr. Thomas has said that.
But it's an extremely limited commercial business that he does on the side outside of his normal occupation.
Extremely limited is not in the law.
And a sawmill is some, or a chainsaw is not something that, it needs to be limited is right, but how do you limit it and what are you gonna call it if you're not, again, putting full-blown sawmill on it?
But chainsaws in the hills, I mean, neighbors should be courteous to each other. I don't particularly like people mowing their lawns at seven in the morning either, but golf courses do. You know, people should be courteous of their neighbors and know that you don't crank up the chainsaw at five AM, start cutting trees. We can't regulate that.
But we're not, they're not commercial businesses either and they're trying to make a living and make extra money off something in this business. So you're, you're taking apples to, to oranges in a different way from where it should be. This, Barb said it straight up, it's commercial and how do we make that work? If we're gonna call it commercial, he wants to do what he's doing in his occupation and still make it so it's LDR.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Lori and I agree with Deb. This is a, this is a citing issue, but note that there is the limited agricultural zoning less than four hundred yards away from his property. So if he were to pick the sawmill up and move it down to lots down Paradise Lane, now all of a sudden he is completely legal within our, within our zoning ordinances and for some reason, that parcel was switched from limited ag to low-density. We don't, we don't know what that is, but certainly this is a, a citing issue. I, I like the idea of, of the deny without prejudice. I, I think between the applicants and their neighbors, there's, there's a solution here and, and I would like to certainly have them have the opportunity to work that out and to come back to this board without paying any additional fees to do so.
And Richie, you make a very good point and just looking at the limited ag lots.
They're available.
They're smaller than, than this lot that we're talking about. I mean, maybe that's a warped way of doing it, but I mean, if it was rezoned to limited ag, there wouldn't be a question, correct?
This would be a non-issue if that sawmill was four hundred yards away.
And, and, you know, my viewpoint is nothing with the pros, nothing with the cons, you know. As far as, I mean, the support of the individuals or opposition by the, it's basically just that we're stretching home use in a residential area.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Did you guys talk about rezoning at all?
Uh, no.
And again, you would discourage rezoning here because it would, you know, put a green area in the middle of a yellow area?
Uh, I mean, it's, it's an option for him to rezone. He would also have to do like a lot size variance.
Various.
Yeah, cause it wouldn't meet the ten-acre minimum requirement, so it would be a, a process.
I guess I'm not looking to rezone him, I'm looking to find a solution with the neighbor so he can do a home occupation and call it somewhat that with the permission of the neighbors that are the closest and not shut it down. I think there's, I'll keep saying there's a solution to, to let it go and maybe turn into, again, Travis said it, we all do it. If we have businesses, we start small and then holy cow. And he's got the talent, without sounding mean to him, I mean this in a, you have the talent to grow this into a pretty big business and make a pretty good living off of it for what you do. So if that wasn't the case, and it truly would have been part-time and you would have been building, you know, tables and all that stuff, I would have been fine in a sense. But it's, my bottom line is how, how much that, that chainsaw is going. I think he cleans his property and does all that appropriately. You know, he knows how to do that. It's that, and I, I think that's an easy solution with the neighbors, is how do we figure out the bottom line with that and still run this business so the neighbors are? And yes, I agree, we have done home occupations, but we tried to find a solution with the neighbors beforehand if it's something substantial and I think it is.
And Mr. Chair, I wanted to clarify that I'm not suggesting rezoning the lot, I just wanted to know if you guys had discussed that.
Right.
That was my only question.
I mean, like I said, it'd be kind of a hard way of doing it, but, and I, I mean, I guess, you know, if it's based just on Jeremiah, I think, you know, you're generally respectful, you know, just maybe don't know the impact to the neighbors, you know, or appreci, fully appreciate it. I, I mean, if it's based on personalities, I'd say yes. I mean, like I said, you know, if you're doing it for your own and not for selling, we wouldn't even be here. That's, that's kind of what's creating the issue. I, I kinda like Deb's idea of basically denial without, without prejudice that gives an opportunity to come back with no additional fees. Now, I guess the negative side of that is it creates another time delay and if you're trying to sell lumber and continue your sawing operations, that puts a time delay on that.
I'd be willing, I'll say this, I'll be willing to help with this solution if I can help in any way. And I'll also go out there and, and help with the, and the planning knows, that department knows, to find a solution with the neighbors and hopefully this business if we deny it. Cause I, I truly believe there's a solution here instead of just shutting him off, so...
Would you like me to withdraw my, my motion for approval? Is that what we need to do or do we need to resolve that first before you have a substitute motion?
Well...
Cause it sounds like you guys are leaning toward wanting to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I believe that's, and we haven't voted yet, but I mean...
You can make a substitute.
Is there a motion?
I don't want to make a substitute motion. I, I don't want to make that motion.
I'll make it.
There is, just under that denial without prejudice in the zoning ordinance, it says that they don't have to pay the application fees, but they do have to pay advertising fee as notice of hearing letters still had to be sent, again. And how much is that? Advertising fee for condition use permit is ninety-six and I'd have to look to see how many letters they would have to have sent with their, was it? Okay.
So have we denied those fees before? The advertising fees?
Up to the board.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we ever did.
Not to my knowledge, no. So that, that'd be something up to you guys.
Which is a better solution than shutting down your business.
We do have a motion and second at this point for approval with just modification of three and removing five.
So I'll, I'll make the motion, or to substitute to deny without prejudice.
A second.
Motion and second for substitute motion deny without prejudice. Further discussion? Any none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
No.
No. Real call, please.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lori?
No.
Aye.
Travis?
No.
Barb?
Aye.
Substitute motion is approved for denial without prejudice. Item fourteen. That was approved. Under the consent calendar. I believe that was... That was on the consent calendar. We did read the items at the beginning of the meeting and read the statement on the process for that, so... I guess the... Well, it could, I don't know, it had to, could be opened up, reconsidered.
Yeah, you'd have to pull it off to make a motion to reconsider it.
Well, again, that's why I read that statement about the consent calendar, that'll be approved with one motion unless it's pulled. I guess that, Jerry, I mean, it could be for reconsidered at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. You guys, yeah, you could pull it off.
Well, having missed that item two, I guess to accommodate her request, do, do I move that we reconsider item six at the end of the agenda?
Uh huh, yep.
Is, is that an appropriate motion?
Yeah, and then you, somebody would have to second that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't here when you guys talked about six, so I missed it too.
So are you proposing amendment, I mean, a motion now to...
Yeah. Is it, can I make that motion?
Yeah.
For item six to be considered at the end of the agenda after, it would be then after item fourteen?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, second.
Michelle, is that appropriate handled this way?
You, you've done it before on a couple of different other items in the past.
Um, I don't have my Roberts Rules of Order with me, but that's my understanding. You can, that, an individual who prevailed on, may bring a motion to reconsider.
And so we have a motion and a second for discussion. I mean, I overslept and, you know, I mean, I'm sorry.
Or you said prevailed, what do you?
Basically, because you approved it, you may bring a motion to reconsider. And anyone who's on the prevailing, prevailing side.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you weren't here to prevail, so you can't...
Well, and what I wanted to say was, again, you know, I don't know what was said at the beginning of the meeting. Maybe it wasn't clear to the people in the audience what was going on, cause I don't know what was said, so. I was trying to be, you know, defending her not knowing how things worked around here.
But yes, you may bring a motion to reconsider.
But that's what my concern is. I don't know that you can make it, cause you weren't here.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
You, I'll make it.
Second it. We'll make it easy.
Motion second to reconsider at the end of the agenda.
Do you want it after item fourteen?
After item, yeah, well, well, after, before we get into staff comments, yeah, after fourteen, after fourteen. Reconsider after fourteen.
Then you'll, you'll have to vote on the motion.
Yeah. A motion second to reconsider, item six and at the, at the end of fourteen, if I, that's correct. Any further discussion? Any none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Look and reconsider six after fourteen.
Okay, are we ready for fourteen?
Yep.
Okay. Item fourteen is a major planned unit development amendment seventeen oh two. This is to amend the existing planned unit development for Robins Roos cabins. The applicant is Cindy Dickmeyer. Basically what the applicant is wanting to do here, she has received approval of a minor plat. She received approval of minor plat seventeen oh five on April fourth of this year to replat this property into two separate lots. As it exists right now, it is one big lot that's three point four one acres. It has multiple cabins and a fourplex located on the property. With her plat, she is dividing it into lot one R and lot three. So she, with this major planned unit development, is wanting to identify and clarify the uses that are allowed on each of those lots. So as it's proposed, lot one R would have seven seasonal cabins and one combination office and three-bedroom rental units. And then lot three would have the four-unit fourplex on it. She's doing this because she is planning on selling off both of these lots. This plat has not been filed yet with the Register of Deeds, so it's not completely official, but she, like I said, is just updating the PUD to clarify the existing uses for each of these lots. So staff is recommending approval of major planned unit development amendment seventeen oh two with thirteen conditions.
Well, I guess I didn't understand, but not limited to the following thirteen conditions. So is that leaving it open-ended? That, that it could be a hundred conditions? I'm not sure what that means.
The, the idea behind, PJ is the one who wrote the staff report for this. The idea behind putting that in there was that she still needs to follow all of the, the other parts of our zoning ordinance aside from these conditions on the PUD. She would still have to adhere to anything else in the zoning ordinance that applied to this. This was kind of a long process, so I, but that, from my understanding, why he put that in there is...
Aren't they obligated to anyway?
Right, yes.
I, I'm just kind of concerned that it kind of creates a confusion and that, I mean, there's some nebulous conditions out there that they may not be aware that they're agreeing to.
Sure, sure.
Oh, golly, Sig, that's a great catch. I would miss that, yeah.
And we can, I mean, we've never done that on any other ones, so I mean, I think PJ would be amendable to taking that out and just saying that approval of major planned unit development amendment seventeen oh two with the following thirteen conditions.
Well, my concern is, it is highly unusual to put a statement like that in there, so there has to be some reasoning behind it too, so...
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that because this was such the project that it was, I mean, Ms. Dickmeyer has been working on this for, geez, a year and a half.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, because of the, the process that it was, that he wanted to make sure that she still adhered to the rest of the zoning ordinance.
And if they sell it, Sig, maybe they might have to add more sticks depending on the PUD and what's gonna go on there next.
Which the new owners would then have to come back in and, and do that, amend it again.
Questions for Cassie other than that? Staff's recommendation for is, for approval of thirteen conditions, is that the way we were worded?
Yeah.
Someone wants to vet your motion to that effect?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Any none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried. Now reconsidered item six, I'm losing my voice, maybe Lori will have to pick over.
Did you want me to go through this, just the background of it or, okay?
That's what we pulled it up.
Okay. This is condition use permit seventeen oh nine to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. The applicant here is Wes and Carrie Mentley. And this property, as it exists today, is three point four one acres. Access to this property is off of Melchert Place. Access to this property is off of Melchert Place. It currently contains a single family residence and an onsite wastewater treatment system. This property, I would like to point out, is located within the hundred year floodplain. The existing single family residence was removed from the special flood hazard area via a letter of map amendment from FEMA, which was approved in two thousand and nine and then revalidated in two thousand and thirteen. And this one came about because we did receive a complaint that a vacation home rental was operating from the subject property without an approved conditional use permit. We did send a letter to the property owner and staff spoke with the property owner who stated that he had a, or has a current sales tax license and a vacation home license from the Department of Health, but was unaware of the requirement for any sort of county permit. He then applied for the conditional use permit on March thirty first, he did pay all applicable application and penalty fees, and he has complied with all of the application submittal requirements for the vacation home rental. His onsite wastewater treatment system was approved by DNR for a maximum overnight occupancy of seven people. Glenda Robertson is designated as the local contact for the vacation home rental. Staff did perform a site visit and met with the local contact on April twenty eighth, and at the time of this staff report writing, staff has spoken with one neighbor expressing concern with the requested conditional use. He, at this time, has not submitted anything in writing formally, but I did have a phone conversation with him and his wife. So staff is ultimately recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen oh nine with seventeen conditions.
Questions for Cassie? You have not, I'd go to the audience then? Wishing to speak, please.
One landowner did speak first. And I apologize again, I don't know this process very well, so thank you for helping educate me. My name is Linda Sandus, I'm the adjacent property owner along with my husband of one one, five two one Melchert Place, and I am not the neighbor that submitted the letter or did the phone call. And I do thank you for this opportunity. My husband and I saved our finances, searched for the right property, and we'd have the quality life that we wanted, built it fore by board ourselves, and we didn't do this with the idea of having a motel next to us with different people coming and going throughout the year. If the owner of the vacation rental home lived next door to the vacation home, he or she would be in a better position to monitor it, maintain it, oversee it. Glenda Robertson is our neighbor, she is the one that oversees it, and so that, in my opinion, is a very good thing, because she is right on top of everything. Couple of questions for clarification, if I might, the maximum number of guests in the property is seven, correct?
Correct.
And that includes people inside or outside?
Well, it's seven at night.
At night.
They are allowed guests.
Right, excuse me, I should have said at night.
Yeah.
And that's inside or outside, like tent or anything else, it's seven total?
I...
Okay, and that includes children? No.
Well...
She are accepted.
Pardon me?
Children were accepted in the order.
Well, but I mean, the DNR, when they base a septic tank and that's...
That's what's my question, if it's based on septic, then it must be limited.
It's based on DNR approval and, and DNR approval doesn't differentiate between a child and adult.
Okay, well then our ordinance needs to be fixed, because it does have an exception, if I remember correctly.
Well, but I mean, somebody could have a septic tank that's well in excess of the number of guests, I mean, in that case...
Right, right, of course.
The children would be accepted, but I interpret it basically, it's based on the DNR approval of the septic system, so it's seven total.
Seven total, thank you. Obviously, we're concerned about the proposal because of our investment in the property and the quality of life, but like I said, with Glenda overseeing it, we will not fight having a one-year conditional use permit on it as long as all seventeen conditions are met. And I just want to go on record saying we appreciate the county and your work trying to help adjacent landowners to maintain their quality of life, so thank you very much.
And like we, some of the previous ones too, I mean, if you feel like there's an issue, that it is one-year review or on a complaint basis, and the complaint basis doesn't need to wait for a year.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
If the stipulations aren't being followed, if approved.
Great, thank you, I'm sure they will be.
Questions for Linda? Thank you.
Thank you again.
Wes and Carrie, are you wishing to speak?
I just had one question, I guess, and I think you answered.
If you can wait till you get to the mic, so it gets picked up, so.
Wes Mentley, thank you for your time, I just had one question, and I think you answered that. I was always under the assumption that, because of near, near three points, anyways, dear, the section three nineteen, it does disclose there that children under the age of five are not counted as occupants, and that was my question, because often I have someone that comes with their mom and dad and uncle Joe, and they come with four kids, and there may be eight or nine people, but two or three or four of them are two and three years old, and so as I read section three nineteen, that I read it as children of age of five and under are not counted.
Well, and maybe, Cassie, I don't know, if you can correct me, but my understanding when DNR evaluates, because I've done, done septic, septic tank permits and approvals in a different life, but, but it's based on bodies, and so you could have a septic tank that's way oversized, and then in that case, it doesn't come into play, and then it would be, the children wouldn't be counted.
What he's saying is our rules say different than DNR, and that if we need to change our rule, that's fine, but if the septic, common sense would tell you if you're on diapers, mostly in that area, you're not going to use a septic.
No.
So...
Cassie, am I incorrect on that, or?
We kind of follow our rules, don't we, Cassie?
Aye.
For vacation rentals.
Yeah, our ordinance does say that children under the age of five do not count as occupants. I can double check with DNR, because I believe DNR follows something of the same rule, to my understanding, that they don't, they don't count kids under a certain age actually into the daily flows, but I can, I'll double check that.
I think you should, just even going forward, but...
Yep, I will double check, I'll double check with Scott Hippel, he's the one who issues those, those letters of the maximum overnight.
Well, I think regardless of the action on this, I think that would be a good clarification for us to have.
Yep, yep, I agree. I'll double check with him, but our ordinance does, he's correct, our ordinance does say five and under don't count as occupants.
I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Does that become an issue for you if DNR does say it's?
Well, the majority of, the majority of time, that's about the maximum I want there anyways, like I said, occasionally...
But kids aren't there at night anyways, daytime count, right?
Yeah, honestly, you know, majority of time, I don't think it is an issue, I, I probably would look at extending my, extending that and, and approving it. I have no desire to have more than seven adults there anyways, but if it, if, if the children do surpass that, so many times I have, you know, a brother and a sister meeting and bringing their children, and that may be eight or nine people, and I want to be within restrict, within guidelines, so I would probably look at extending that water system if possible, getting the appropriate permit to do so, in that case, but I just wanted to verify and clarify that.
And I would agree with what Deb said too, as far as, I mean, young kids...
That's wise.
Yeah, I know, anyway, but, you know, if they're in diapers, you're not adding to loading, if you got young kids like that, they probably don't believe in three showers a day anyway, so, you know.
I, I looked at, and you were a lawyer, I paid the fines, I did not realize that, I looked at my schedule coming up for the summer, and I think there's three different times that I'm gonna, that I'm set to be over seven people, so I don't want to hide that, and I also don't want to tell them after they've planned on this vacation for eight months that they can't come because I'm approved for seven, when some of those children are younger and that's what's taking me over that amount. So I just want to be clear and clarify that.
I would suggest a follow-up with Cassie.
Okay.
Just give her a chance to talk to Scott Hippel, have to stay and confirm that one way or another.
More because you comply with us, but you just want to make sure you're on the bottom line, that you're complying with the DNR, because that's how you get your vacation home rental as well, makes sense?
Correct, I don't want to have an issue down the road because I'm over seven or eight, and so.
Okay, questions for Wes?
Thank you for your time.
Questions for Wes or Carrie? Thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve now?
Yeah, we don't have a motion yet, so.
No, I was just answering Barb's question.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit CU seventeen dash nine, what, seventeen conditions was there?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried.
I'm going to apologize, I have to go to work.
No.
Unless you guys have a question for me before I leave.
I think we're, you're wrapping up quick, so.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, county board...
We'll get over faster then.
All right, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April twenty fourth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of planned unit development review oh nine oh two for the Salvation Army, and the Planning Commission had recommended approval of the extension of the planned unit development with twenty conditions. The Board of Commissioners made a motion to continue that item for clarification on some fire things, is that correct, Jerry?
Yeah, it was something to do with, um, fire requirements?
Some fire requirements, some of the conditions...
Like permitting?
Yeah, that were specific to the, to fire and fire pits and things along those lines they wanted clarified, so they continued that item.
Anything else?
Nope.
Items from the public, Joyce?
Joyce Shugru, and I'll back up and repeat a little bit of what I said earlier, and I do appreciate that Mr. Goodwin is bringing these forward for, so that they meet our requirements. First of all, I would ask that you be consistent in applying the penalties, and I know that you did know in advance today that, that some had been operating illegally, and that will be taken care of, and I don't know how that you find out as these come forward unless someone complains, because it's apparent that that's not being offered to you in advance. But be consistent in applying the penalties, otherwise it's unfair, and that has all kinds of ramifications in the future. Then, as I said, I appreciate Mr. Goodwin getting these in compliance, I don't know what else is out there, he has thirty properties, he had three on the agenda today, two of them were pulled, so you had discussion on them, the third went through on the consent calendar, so I don't know if there's any background information you needed in addition. And as he was talking to you, it appeared to me that he may not understand the rules really well, so it might be helpful for him to come in and spend some time with the staff, he's got thirty properties, that's a big responsibility in the vacation home rental arena, that he understand the ordinance clearly and what's expected of him as a manager of those properties, if he's bringing more before you in the future. So maybe some preparation on his part with the staff might be helpful and alleviate some of the issues that came up this morning. And as I listened today, I appreciate how thoughtful you are and how you make your decisions. One is, you're able to separate personalities from the issue before you, and what the decision and the decision you're making has ramifications for the future, so that the ordinances are applied impartially. And of course, you know, I'm very concerned about commercialization of residential areas, and the remark that was made, I have chainsaws, you know, very consistently in my development, we live in the woods, people are cutting their wood, or they're cutting down their bug trees, we don't have any commercial operations, and so chainsaws and wood splitters are an everyday occurrence, but in my mind, that doesn't mean that a commercial sawmill is okay, just like if I wash my car in my driveway, doesn't mean it's okay to have a car wash in the development, okay, so be, and I appreciate your being thoughtful about that, because, you know, they're baby steps, but in, they do have ramifications for the future. And I attended the first meeting, the public meeting, on the revision of the comp plan, and I don't know how that process will go forward, but that, we need to pay attention to that and what it does for residential areas, and can we, in that new comp plan and review of the ordinances, take care of some of these issues and, and make it easier for you to make decisions? I don't know that that's possible, but we had a number on the consent calendar this morning that from staff's perspective, we're okay to go forward, and yet there was lengthy discussion about them. So as we work through the new comp plan, can we do something to make it more clear what we want to happen in residential areas? So that's what I had to say, but I do appreciate how thoughtful you are, it takes a lot of time, but it's really good discussion, and for somebody like me sitting in the back, brings forth things that we need to think about in the future, and I also appreciate you accommodating the citizen who did not understand the process, and with consent calendar, they have to understand that if they want it pulled, and I don't know how to express that any more clearly, but that's happened before, and, you know, it doesn't happen every time, but those of us back out here who don't know how it all works, you know, we're just not right in there, asking you for things that we don't understand the process, so, thank you.
I appreciate your comment on that, and I kind of thought too, is that maybe you just need to flag that, instead of just reading the statement, I just need to flag.
Yeah.
It will be, it's going to be done.
Yeah, and you know, as I sit in the back, you can sort of figure out, and I'm sure you from up here as well, you have a better view than I do, you know who's, who's here for what, but, and so if there's people that hang around and it's sort of past all of this stuff, you know, why are they still here? And invariably, it's because they missed that step and didn't know what to do, so I'm not real helpful there, Sig, but, you know, I'm glad that you allowed them, because it would have been disheartening if you hadn't allowed them to come forward and speak, because they just don't understand.
Maybe you just need to make it very clear that it's the end of the consent calendar, okay, now we're done with items, and maybe you just need to restate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so items through, through, you know, whatever, and now we're moving, and then maybe, and then if you see someone in the back, is there anyone back here that, you know, has...
Well, especially when you get a bigger, bigger crowd, you know.
And, and you know, it doesn't only happen here, it happens at, at the Board of Commissioners meetings as well.
It happens.
And I picked up on one, they were my neighbors, actually, and I thought, and they were leaving angry, because they didn't think they'd been allowed to speak and they thought it was on purpose. Well, right away, then I went to PJ and I said, hey, of course, they took care of it, but it can be critical, you know, for attitude about the public if they think they haven't been allowed their say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yeah, I think adding a definitive sentence in here would just do the trick.
Items from staff building your report?
Okay, so the building permit report, overall, the number of permits from this time last year is up by about twelve percent, however, we are still down in valuation, we are down from last year still in single family homes and also mobile homes, so we're down just in general on homes coming into the county. We are up quite a bit in terms of garages and carports and accessory structures and things along those lines, but the big things, we're still down, so our total valuation is still off by about twenty-eight percent.
Questions for Cassie on the building report? Update on the comp plan?
Yes, our consultant, he was here in April for a week, he met with several people, I think he met with quite a few of you guys, and held three public meetings, our first public meetings, we had pretty good turnout at them, there was one in Wall, there was one in Hill City, and there was one here in Rapid, so we had pretty good public turnout at that one, those ones were more just brainstorming sessions and giving an update of the comprehensive plan and what it's meant to do. He will be back for the next round of public workshops, June twentieth through the twen- He will be back, um, for the next round of public workshops, June twentieth through the twenty-second. Again, there will be one public workshop in Wall, one in Keystone this time, I believe, instead of Hill City, and then one here in Rapid City at the, um, Black Hills, South Dakota State Campus.
University Center.
Yes, the University Center, thank you. So he will be here, um, that entire week again as well.
Be part, scared off from the jail?
Yeah, I, I guess.
That's funny.
But they will be night workshops again, um, anticipated start of six o'clock, I believe, again, just like the first round, that seemed to work well for people.
Do you have times on that, or you'll provide those later, Dee?
Uh, we'll provide those, I believe PJ, um, was still working on concreting the locations of them, but then he will send them out.
Okay, thanks. Items for membership?
Oh, I, I would like to just compliment our legal representative, uh, you just, your competency is very much appreciated, and your comments were great.
Appreciate you recognizing, well, we got a looming question coming up too. Anything else, Rich?
I may be gone on the twenty-second, um, I have not final, finalized that yet, um, so I apologize for that, but I, uh, um, if so, I'll be sure to let you guys know.
Oh, and I'll be gone the first week in June, so I'm sure I'll miss the first meeting.
What date, let's see what date is on it. I will be Skyping the first, the first June meeting.
Okay.
I'll let Andy know.
What is the date of the first?
It's the twelfth, June twelfth.
Twelfth, yeah, I'll be, I'll be still gone.
I might, I'll let y'all know for sure I'm finalizing plans, I might be gone that meeting, because my daughter's got an appointment in Denver. So, a cardiology appointment will be hidden down.
So we may need to round up additional board members if.
Yeah, just let us know as.
Pardon me?
Just let us soon, let us know as soon as you can, so we can maybe, um, get some.
I should be finalized by next meeting, so I'll, I'll know for sure.
There's nothing else, any other motion for adjournment?
So moved, second.
All in favor, same sign by saying aye.
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 Where adjourned?
That was funny.